Right. Go. This morning. Regular session of the which is starting on the seventeenth of November. Starting nine o'clock. Chair. Would you mind leaving this in the I believe it's verified in the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, sir.
The eleven thirty has been removed. The family's working it out, so I don't think it'll be you don't think it'll be put that long?
Yeah.
Okay, any donations, any's not here this morning? Yeah. We motion on the second for remove the first half payroll for December. Make a motion to approve second half payroll on November thirtieth. Okay? Okay, I make a motion to through the first half and second half payroll on December fifteenth and December thirtieth.
Second.
Okay, have a motion to the second to approve the second half payroll for November, first half payroll for December. All those in all those in vouchers and invoices. Tom, you know something on that? Or
we have anything remarkable? Wow. I don't know, something I'm trying.
I make a motion for here on the motion second to approve our invoices and payers. All those in favor?
And we approve the state settlements.
A second. Here we have a motion second on the state settlements. All those in favor? Aye.
Yeah. That's six, seven, seven, ten. I'm going to be approved meeting minutes from October sixth, October twenty seventh.
A second. Here we have a motion second to approve the minutes for ten sixteen, eleven, ten. All those in favor? Aye. We didn't do that pretty well. I was referring to, I'm not we had lost one.
So the first thing is a letter to the Supreme Court requesting reimbursement for the family law after the months of September and November.
Make a motion to approve.
That's right.
Here we have a motion to the second to approve the letter going to the Supreme Court for our reimbursement for the family law center. Any other discussion on? All those in favor? Aye. Okay.
So the second item is that reimbursement check the page can put a PSD. I'm assuming you talk to the Memorial Center.
Yes, I talked to Jim. The closing is going to be November thirtieth at ten o'clock. And before that happens, all of the paid disbursements will be made to the PSD and to the creditors. So the amount that we get back from will be getting our thirty thirty thousand dollars back from the PSD.
Okay. So that if we write that check back to them, that's included as part of it?
Yes.
Those are in the reimbursement.
Yes, because they just don't have the funds.
So we're to reimburse their twelve thousand. So somebody wrote a check to pay off of that full loan. So we're just gonna add that out back to the one to give them the check because they did not have the funds.
And then which would be American law will reimburse it on November thirtieth? For thirty thousand?
It was all outstanding on the
Correct.
Based on that, either the being reversed, they can get a PSD mistaken overpayment of their loan.
A second. Here we have a motion second to approve the reimbursement back because we gave it on miswriting of the check. All those in favor?
All right, the next is a request from Angela Gerald to fill vacancies in the board on November Kelly will come to remind him of the way someone rich things if he apply and I remember we
A second. Here we have a motion second to approve Kevin's plan to
Angela.
To a planning commission, all those in favor? Aye.
Angela, did you have something to add?
Um, I just let you guys know what I'm gonna plan to do is in January, I'm gonna send their bylaws and let them have the whole month of December to review them because they'll have to update them because the bylaws of course say fourteen members. And then I'll have them review them and then I'll kind of have a meet and greet sometime in January and they have their elected president or chairman and all that, so it's kind of my plan. Also Jeff Atha, who's on our Board of Zoning Appeals, he passed away a few months ago. His term expires, I believe, in January. So we'll need somebody to fill his position. So the Board of Zoning Appeals does not have a like guidelines on where they live at or any type of party, there's no currently, we have someone from the Valley, someone from Pax, we have someone from Anstead and someone from Oak Hills. Or the Jeff was in the Oak Hill area as well, there was two people from Oak Hill, but I don't know anybody if I have any interest of anybody contacting me wanting to serve, so. Yeah, like I said, his term doesn't end until January, I just, and I don't have any problem ever having quorum for BZA, but it you know, eventually we do need to fill that position sometimes maybe. But I'll get with any and get it advertised.
The next is a request from Diane. In the part two, that's the one. Morning.
Yeah, Diane.
Hi. Nice to see you again. Um, so we have currently, we have six openings on the Park and Rec Advisory Board, which is more than we had originally thought that we had. Um, and the reason that we have a six one now is that Veronica Crozier internally has resigned, but I don't believe a letter has been submitted to the to the commission unit. So that leaves us with the New Haven District Representative, the Plateau District Representative, the Valley District Representative, a Recreation Representative, a Senior Citizen and a High School Student are vacancies. I do have just a brief little thing that I typed up to advertise if you guys would like for that to be sent out, like you had just said, Allison, on the Facebook page and the paper. We do have some applications in, but I understand if you want to advertise first and wait and see if we get anymore, because we currently don't have six applications in, so we'd still have vacancies even if all three were approved, so. Um, I I could, yeah. I know a few of the principals just through teen court, so. I'm just roping the kids and everything, yeah. Yeah, I don't, since I've been on the board, we've not had a high school student, so I would anticipate that that spot's been vacant for some time.
Mayor Dr. Ann?
Yes, sir.
Do you have anybody from the Valley who'd make the interest in you being on the board of the Parks and Recreation?
I'm sure we can start, do you need a name now?
No, just a we just need them to contact.
There's gonna be an application on the website.
Yeah. Yeah.
I'll get with you in front of the
Yeah. Well, if we, if what is typed up in front of you is posted on social media, you know, we can hyperlink the link where it says, you know, click here to do the application, obviously if it goes in like the paper or anything, it would just have to say like go to the commission website to view the application. Um, how long would you recommend advertising for?
Usually it's generally two weeks.
Okay.
But it's always been a hard work.
Yeah, we don't have quorum internally to make any decisions right now, so till we get um, well, in most cases that I've seen when someone is leaving, they have helped to find their replacement.
Chair. Yes. Could you put this on your social media?
I have a copy.
Just ever send me something, not you. Yeah, we'll teach you a copy of what she came up with and multiple thousands of people watching.
That sounds good, makes it easier.
I can do all that.
Just share what we put on our share.
I can do. Yes, ma'am.
So are you gonna wait till point board members are getting the grant?
Yes.
That works for us.
We just get that on the agenda.
Yep, for next one, absolutely, thank you. Okay. Yeah, because we'll have a full four, four weeks before the next commission meeting, so in two weeks, like you recommended, we don't have enough to fill the six spots and yeah. Try to push it a little harder.
Next.
We, we meet on the second Wednesday, I meant your, your meeting to actually appoint, you know. If we get enough applications, then we'll come back in December to have you officially appoint them. We, we do as a park board, we don't have quorum, so we won't be able to make any decisions anyway. We'd probably meet just to yeah, touch base. Right, so we can at least have quorum to start making decisions, even if we're not full of the six spots. Perfect, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, the next one is discussion decision on allowing Oaky to ignore the not manager of the memorial building is scheduled the memorial building has neither without permission approval. Like there's a application for rental, Oaky knows involved, they could fix the calendar. And once you can see a reason why it has to go in the agenda, I feel like it helps things up. We don't have a rate schedule yet until the dollar bill orders and that can solve that, so basically speaking of calendars.
And then I talked to Oaky last night, but I would there, he wants to do it.
I talked to him about a page, so I talked to him about it.
He said drop them both. Yeah, I've been dropping both.
I ran into him and I was like, why aren't you doing this? But anyway, I think it's a good idea, I've said over and over, I don't think the commission should make one of those decisions, because Oaky has any concerns to address prosecuting attorney. And we should get with whatever the current piece of it was, if the park service circle or parker comes up with another.
I don't think we're even approved.
Correct. Were they charging, or they haven't charged?
No, just
the board regulation. Okay, so I, I mean, I think we need to sustain the same policy. Okay. So we can come up with like instead of the letters, like some kind of and actually the application, they'll not have a proof section. Now we can rename that. What explanation, yeah, explanations, that's all we need to discuss. Okay, so I'm, I'm going to leave our to manage the
Here we have a motion in the second to allow Oaky to do the job. All those in favor? Aye.
So you want to start with these next two?
Yes.
All right. I'll get it here. So the next item is a request for our health department, Sarah Carey, Marla, Theresa Reynolds, who
Karen?
Yes. I'm sorry, I couldn't hear what you guys said.
You asked for Teresa Reynolds to be on the Department of Health, or County Board of Health.
Yes.
Okay, what's her background?
She has, do you have the form that she filled out? She completed the, the the information, she has a nursing background?
I'm sorry, I did not have nursing background.
I'm having a really hard time hearing you guys today, I'm not sure what's going on with the the sound there.
Yeah. Yeah, my microphone's over here.
There you go, that's much better.
Okay. So what else other than she is a
She's a resident of the Valley. She's a resident of the Valley and we really felt like we needed some more represented, representation from that area. We're doing, we're doing a lot of work there. And so, yeah, we, we feel like she would be, she also has got some experience folks in recovery, which you know, with people who struggle with substance use disorder, and so we, of course, would value her insight and feedback around that area, we just feel like she would be an an asset to our board.
Okay, whose place would she take?
She is filling the vacancy that's actually, we've had that vacancy now since well, I'm not even sure, John, I'll have to look, it may be since Roy Christ.
Okay.
Is this, is this the vacancy that you discussed with me some time ago when when I suggested you reach out to the head of nursing at Montgomery? Yes. Okay. Yes. And this person actually has connection with the head of nursing at Montgomery, so. Yeah. Yeah, so they, they actually went to a lot of trouble to find somebody representative who was not our, a population that wasn't already represented on the Health Department Board, because Terry discussed this with me at a prior meeting, so
Okay.
I move that we approve this appointment of Teresa Reynolds to the Board of Health.
A second. Here we have a motion in the second to appoint Ms. Reynolds to the Board of Health, all those in favor? Aye. Taking care of Terry.
Thank you.
Okay.
We'll go to the next one, or you want to go ahead and do the sheriffs?
I think we have to go ahead and do the sheriffs to get it out of the way, because this one could be a little bit longer.
Well, I, no, I just think we need to make sure that's been advertised.
Just that for proof of signature of the property sold at the county land sale, it was held on October twenty first. We sold a hundred thirty eight properties to the state, two hundred nineteen to individuals, for a total of three hundred fifty seven properties to be sold. I'm gonna present this to man clerk and there's two papers that need to be signed, one to stay with the clerk, one to stay with
Oh. Looking forward on this.
I'm here, you all right, Karen?
Hmm? No, worry about that.
No, she's got papers to sign.
So what did we end up making from the sale?
I don't know exactly the number, I can give it, I mean, I can tell you. Had to go through each district, I think it was like you trying to make it there for me? It's roughly around three hundred thousand or something.
What sum will that go into?
It
Oh, and for the sheriffs?
Yeah, it kind of sits there for a while.
Because, because the reason why it, well, some of them don't, because some have been redeemed, meaning come back from the state or whatever, or somebody came and repaid it, but a lot of the sold would have to stay in what has limbo for eight months, if somebody has a chance to redeem it, and once they do redeem it through the ogre's office, then they send us a check back and then it goes into whatever.
Well, it is distributed, it doesn't all go here.
It does, yeah, because you still gotta do all your money to Board of Education, to the cities and all that stuff, so not all of it comes right back to the account.
Right. It is transferred.
Yeah.
I don't think actually.
But you know, the question was asked on one of the listeners. There's really two lands sales, there's a county land sale that we just did, sold three hundred and some properties. They have eighteen months to be counted back to the state orders, and then the ogre comes in also and does a land sale. But once they sell it, it's done, it's a done deal, you know, because they went all through the process of we're about that property and then they get to keep it and stuff, so it's two separate ones, this is just the county, which might be getting rid of, or we might not have to do with it, so we'll find out more about that during the specification session.
So do we have to approve something?
Yeah, you just have to approve the section of the land being sold.
I approve, or I move that we sign um the document approving the sale of the land. Sheriff was presenting.
A second.
And they changed that too up this year, a bit different.
Okay, we had a motion the second to approve and sign the paperwork for the sale of the or sale of the tax houses. All those in favor? Aye. Thank you. Thanks, Mike. Okay, it's nine, almost nine thirty for leadership Fayette County. Counselor? I love the photos you've been posting. Those are some big bucks.
Sheriff's here with exoneration.
I make a motion to approve exoneration presented by the assessor's office.
A second.
Is it personal or?
No, personal, just real estate.
Just real estate. Okay. Here we have a motion the second to approve the real estate exonerations presented by Tara this morning. All those in favor? Aye. Do we have any? Never mind, we didn't answer my question. Are any of these refunds?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I gotta answer, gotta write twice.
Yes.
The refund was for five seventy or five eighty seventy nine. Now, is that refund going to be staying on their books so that they'll have credit? Or is this actual refund?
It is an actual I didn't hear that, I didn't know that, so I'm not sure.
There, if you can look at those, here's this part. And I'm not gonna give it all to you.
It's this.
As you come up this way, we're not gonna bite.
Yeah, one of those leaders. Don, that does look like an easy refund, it looks like they already paid half of it.
Okay, all right, thank you. Good morning, Mr. Heater, how are you? Is this everybody?
We're all here, yeah.
Okay. All right, well, you got that Abby with you, so. All right, well, you got Abby with you, so. What school do we represent or different schools or?
We all represent Oak Hill High School.
What was that one more time?
Oak Hill High School.
Oak Hill High.
They're all from Oak Hill.
Okay, thank you. So what are you guys learning today so far?
So they have a little routine they'd like to present you.
Okay. Go ahead, the four jurors.
Good morning. My name is Hannah White. I go to Oak Hill High School and I'm in the 11th grade. I'm part of this year's leadership Fayette County and we would like to tell you about it.
Yes, and I've learned through our four sessions of leadership Fayette County about how to be a more confident person and how to help Fayette County in the future.
We've participated in lots of activities in our community. We met local business owners and leaders that we can learn from. And we worked on applying those skills in our schools and our sports and community.
They said, within the first session, we learned how to talk better, communicate without pausing so often saying, oh, and fill in.
Yes, and in our second session, we learned a lot about team building and grew as a group and improved our abilities to work together. Leadership Fayette County has helped us to be able to connect our community, which we usually don't get to, and kind of put our opinions into some things. And also have taught us valuable leadership skills that would be able to apply.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody.
Got any questions for him?
We have all kinds of questions. You should know that.
Oh, this is. Oh, yeah.
Jeff, how long has Leadership Fayette County happened?
Leadership Fayette County's been in place for almost 20 years, minus a couple of pandemic years. And the, yeah, this did it. I did the antha. This class is a little smaller than normal because of the pandemic. Normally, we take 11 to 14 kids. They go through an interview process. First, they just submit a, an application. And then they come in to a panel interview. And then we select a group out of that pool. And then we do 12 to 13 sessions throughout the year. County government, local business, state government, tourism, team building, several others. At the end, if they complete the process, graduation is our final session where they get up and give an acceptance speech. And they get a thousand dollar scholarship, which is supported in part by local businesses in our community. And the New River Burning and Nature Festival, which we use the funds we raised from that event to fund this program. Okay. Elevator version.
Always used to call it the Reader's Digest version, but no one except for people our age knows what that is. Well, you guys met Gabe and Abby. And Abby, I would like for you guys to do a survey with them on the comp plan for the county.
So I was going to add, and I didn't want to take any of their thunder or their time. We did. I was very impressed with the results that they, and the answers that they gave us. We went through all the same questions that were asked all the communities throughout Fayette County. And they came up with some really great, unique answers. And we talked about individual assets as well as community assets. And what they would like to see to stay in or come back to Fayette County as adults. So it was, I think, a very enjoyable session, but we did got some stuff out of it as well. But they're a great group and I'm glad that I was able to spend some time with them today.
Okay, thank you.
So given that, do you think it would be worthwhile to, to contact the administrators at the local high schools to see if they would hold an assembly to allow us to present and gather data? Okay. Thank you guys for participating in that. It's important.
Okay, so let's do some introductions. Allison is a commissioner, county commissioner, and she takes care of the.
You guys know what we do. It's county, we're the county government, basically. You know how you have state government with the governor? Well, here there are three governors, basically. We take care of the budget, where we're gonna spend money. We hear the concerns of our citizens and we come up with ideas for the future of the county, which is what we engaged you in doing. And, and then we allocate money, taxpayer money toward making those things a reality. And I know it's been really important to all of us that we keep folks like you here. Now, I know Kalila and I know her mom doesn't want her to leave the state and not come back and have kids. And I'm sure your parents don't either. I had to do that myself. I had to leave because I couldn't afford to work here and make a living. I left, I worked a whole career and I earned a retirement income. And then I came back and I'm working a second career now. And I don't want that to happen to you guys and none of us do. I mean, we want you to have the choice. Now, if you want to go off and do some things and come home, we just want you to have options. Don't want you to be forced to leave home to be able to earn a living or, or do something cool. And we want you to be able to have your parents when you have kids and to help with your kids. I mean, just a lot of us just weren't able to have that when the coal industry failed. So we're looking at ways to help this economy sustain itself in the absence of the coal industry. And so that's a big objective that we have. We have other little things that come in all the time that we're dealing with. We're in charge of the 911 center in the county. We're in charge of the day report center, which is where it's an alternative program to jail when people are trying to get their acts together and rejoin society. So those are the types of things. We're in charge of trying to make sure everybody has clean water, which they don't in this county, in case you were wondering. Some people don't have running water at all. And those are things that we've been looking at and trying to figure out. How we just got awarded $8.1 million for the Americans Relief Plan and that was related to COVID. Every municipality, whether it's the city of Oak Hill or Fayetteville, got money. And the county itself got $8.1 million. So we have to figure out how best to allocate that money to benefit the entirety of Fayette County. And that's, that's one of our big decisions right now that we, we're gonna be working on. But those are the sorts of things that we do. And we do contribute money to different programs and things like that. And, and you know, if your program managers come in and ask for a donation out of those funds and it's legally something we can do, that's something we will consider.
Tom, whatever, exactly what Ms. Tyler said. Yeah, but what area do you take care of?
Our districts.
Yeah.
I'm over Fayetteville and the current New Haven district encompasses Meadow Bridge, Danies and Fayetteville. And interestingly, today, we are going to make a decision on the new districts. We have to do that every 10 years after the census. And so we've had several presentations come to us and that will affect who represents each district on the Board of Education. It will affect who represents each, each district up here because we have three, Plateau, New Haven and Valley. And I'm Plateau, I'm New Haven or I'm New Haven.
Plateau.
And he's Valley. But interestingly, all three of us live up here. So the way the districts are currently drawn, they all have a nexus to the Plateau. And do any of you think that's fair to people in the Valley or up in Meadow Bridge or Danies? That I live in the town of Fayetteville, but I represent people up on the mountain I never see. It's not the way it was meant to be. We were supposed to represent the people and the reason they're divided this way is so we can advocate for people in our communities. And so you wouldn't want somebody advocating for you who lives way down in Montgomery. Just like, you know, as somebody who grew up in Montgomery, I don't want somebody up here, you know, advocating for me. Now, he lives closer to the valley than, than any of, he's in the Plateau. But I live so far away from what the original New Haven district was that it just doesn't make sense. So today, we are going to consider several proposals to, to figure out which map we want to pick to make sure people are fairly represented throughout the county. And that's an important responsibility, but it's really gonna affect you with regard to the Board of Education.
And I will say one thing, now that Ms. Tyler spoke up on one certain issue. I'm a, I was elected as Plateau. I represent all corners of Fayette County.
That's true.
Not just the Plateau district, all corners of Fayette County. All of us do that. We're in the valley, we're in Meadow Bridge, we're in Oak Hill. One thing that we decided earlier in this, in this mission of our commission, wow, that was a ton of questions. That we were gonna work the entire county, just not the areas we represent. It's very important that we do that. They all know who we are. That way, when we talk about something going on in Meadow Bridge or something going on in Mount Hope or PAX, we know where those areas are. And we, we're better aligned than we've been before in the past.
And significantly, our elections are every two years. So I was elected in this last election in November. Commissioner Brennaman's gonna run for election next year. And then Commissioner Louiso's two, a year after that, right? Or two years, two years after that. So we're staggered two years. So you don't have all the new people. But the entire county votes for all three commissioners. But you just can't run for a certain district unless you live in it. So when we redraw, I mean, we do represent everybody and we do care about everybody. But as far as who is allowed to even contend for one of these seats, that's, you have to live in that district. You have to be a community member in that district. So that's a really important decision that we're gonna be making today.
And if you want to know more about what, what we do as far as in depth, you can go on YouTube. We're on Zoom and you can go on YouTube now. Does that do this correctly? I haven't looked at any. I'm afraid to. But anyway, you can go on YouTube and look at it and see what, see what we do in depth sometimes.
And we post minutes that if you don't feel like watching YouTube for six hours.
Well, this place is more excited than YouTube.
You can look, we have an agenda and you can look at our agenda that they're all posted, even the old ones. And then if you see something that looks interesting to you, you can try to find that time within YouTube and watch it. Or you can look at our minutes, which we post on our website. So there are a couple of ways. YouTube, the minutes are more of a summary. They're not verbatim what happened, but, but YouTube is the whole thing. You get to hear everything we said and make sure you have your caffeine ready.
Yeah. And Michelle Holly is our, our circuit clerk.
County clerk.
County clerk.
County clerk, yes. And then we have our counselor, prosecutor.
Prosecuting attorney. He's the elected prosecuting attorney, Anthony Silberti.
And the most important person in the room, in my opinion, besides the attorney, is Ruth. That's the accountant.
She's the county administrator. She runs everything, all of our human resources, our budget. She brings the problems to us with a solution in hand. She manages everything we do. Keeps us, make sure we do everything we say we're gonna do and, and make sure that we, you know, are spending our money properly according to the law.
And Amy is Ruth's assistant.
She's our, she's our assistant. She's the one who puts all of this together and keeps us organized for these meetings. And it's no easy feat. I sent her a bunch of stuff this morning, right before the meeting that we needed to have. And she didn't only, you know, prepare it, she refunded it and, and had it to us before I sat down in my chair today. And she probably had 10 minutes before I got here from when I hit send and came from my house. So she, she does a lot. She manages all the calls. We have people call all the time to, usually to complain that something's wrong. And, and a lot of times, I mean, a lot of their complaints are legitimate. Some aren't, but a lot are. If somebody has a big pothole in their road or something that's, or some dangers, some, like we had one time, there was not a guardrail somewhere where there probably should have been one and things like that. Where even though we don't have the power to fix it, we do have the power to go to other people who do have the power to fix it. So we can advocate for Fayette County and we do. We work with, I see Senator Manchin's representative is here today. We work with the senators and congresspeople at the federal and state levels to make sure that the policy is up to date. The things, the rules we have to abide by, a lot of haven't been updated in a long, long time and they just don't apply anymore. So they actually come and sit in on our meetings or they'll zoom in and they'll pay attention and talk to us. And, and they're open to changing things. Or if we need funding for something, if we say we have people in this area with no water at all, when all these federal infrastructure dollars that are coming down, come down, they know that there's an area in Fayette County that, that needs them. And so that's the sort of things that we do for you.
So what questions do you guys have?
We get paid. Do you know if we get paid? We get paid. I think it's 40, I think it's $42,000 a year.
I have a couple of questions.
Kalila had one too, yeah.
So like, where did your career start? How did you work up to be?
That was perfect. That's what I was gonna ask. So, Obeechu, what do you do outside of the commission?
Well, I've, I've been in the restaurant business all my life. My father had been, he was a House of Delegates member for 22 years. I swore I would never be a politician, I'd be a public servant. I always wanted to make hot dogs and ice cream. But when he more or less retired, I guess I just decided to do it. So that's why I'm here.
I, I'm a farmer and a construction person. I started talking about some things that just rubbed me wrong when they were, you know, pre, before I got onto the commission. And people were telling me to put my money where my mouth is. So I decided to go ahead and run and actually was successful and enjoy helping people. To do this job, you really got to enjoy helping people and look for opportunities.
In this job, I'll say one more thing. This job is not a one day a week. County commission job is not a one day a week, two day a week. It's 24/7. Realistically, it's a 24/7. I don't care what anybody says. It's a 24/7 job.
Your phone will ring at any time during the night if there's an emergency. Your phone will ring at seven o'clock in the morning till nine o'clock at night. Especially when you're in between both people. So it's a, it's a great learning experience. But you really want, you really want this job if you like to help people.
I think it's interesting because we all have very different backgrounds. I think what it really takes to be an effective and good politician in whatever position you have is that you have to, you have to care about the people you represent more than you care about yourself and your own personal aspirations. I mean, it helps if you're ambitious because you, if you're energetic and you go out and you do those things. But a lot of people get caught up in the, in the power and they get caught up in the title and, and the prestige. And they forget that they're only there because of you, because you put them there. For me, I hate politics. I lived and worked in Washington DC for 12 years and I don't even, I'll, I'll drive 100 miles out of my way just not to go through it anymore because I don't like it there. I ran because my party asked me if I would consider it. And I said no, because I hate meetings and politics and it's pretty much what the big part of it. And, and then they asked me to reconsider. So I, I read four years' worth of meeting minutes to see, cause I didn't really understand what the commission did. I just knew it seemed boring when I was a prosecutor and I would see them in here all day. And, and then I, I saw a pattern of, you know, what I thought was just spending without consideration, without setting priorities. You know, like they were trying to be good commissioners. And when somebody came in and said, you know, I need $3,000 for 50 barn cats. The commission said, oh, do we have $3,000? And they would say, yeah, we do. Okay, you get your barn cats. And instead, and then a month later, somebody would come in from Montgomery and say, a building's falling down and it's gonna kill people and we were out of money. So that was one of the things that stood out to me is that I felt like we. So that was one of the things that stood out to me, is that I felt like we needed to have a plan, and then we had to have priorities, and then we had to spend accordingly, instead of, because we can't help everybody, we don't have the resources to do that. So we owe you a responsibility of trying to figure out what's most important to you, and then spending accordingly, instead of just to anybody who has a time off work to put their hand out. But for me, I went in the military, like I said, I had to leave. I had scholarships to school, but I was lazy and didn't want to go to class, so I joined the military. And I was in an intelligence officer for 18 total years, seven in the Air Force, and then another 11 with the FBI and CIA. And then I went to law school at night, which was hard. While I was working at FBI and CIA, where I worked during 9/11, and, and the wars in Afghanistan and Iraq when they started. And, and I finished, and I started practicing law in 2008. I've been a prosecutor, and now I'm a defense attorney. But again, your, your background isn't really, to me, as important as your desire to help the people you represent. Because, you know, we have good commissioners up here, and, and we don't have anything in common as far as our background and what got us here. But what we do have in common is that we care about the county, and no, don't have a personal political agenda and that sort of thing. And that's, that's what I think is the most important. And as you guys grow up, and you select your representatives and start voting, I urge you to seek those kind of people out. They're going to be the ones who hate it, like me, who don't want to run. You know, who don't want to be in office, but who suck it up, just like John said, there was a, there, he felt like he had to step up, because, and that's what I felt like. Like, if I don't, who will? And you have to ask yourself that, because there are huge sacrifices. As Commissioner Louisa says, the phone rings all the time. It is not a part-time job. They pay us as if it's part-time. But we get calls all the time, and it's not fun. You get made fun of on Facebook. I don't know if any of you have seen all of the stuff. We are in a pothole at Kroger's. I don't know if you guys have seen that meme, but.
Enjoyed.
I know, I thought that was funny. And I actually like it when people make fun of us, rather than just complaining. But, but, you know, you're, you're in the spotlight, you don't have privacy anymore. But if you just continue to look at the people you're able to help by virtue of your sacrifice, then it's worth it. That's how it was for me in the military, and that is how it is for me now. So go out there and, and serve, you know. It doesn't pay well, but it, it can reap some rewards.
And please consider, you know, starting at your city or your town, and working your way up, because we don't have enough young people in our services, you know, filling in the next leadership.
We don't. We're trying to recruit a high school student for the park board, if anybody's interested.
Who, tell us more about that?
Well, our Park and Recreation Board, I'm really not all that fluent in all the things they do.
Only knows we need somebody on the park. And I suggest a little bit of.
They come up with activities, and they make decisions about our, our county park and the sorts of events and things. We have the pool down there, and they just had a cool event down there for the holidays. Was it Halloween, or? The Fall Festival?
Fall Festival.
But they vote and plan those sorts of things. Abby, do you want to speak to it a little more? Do you know?
Um, you guys know where the 4H, the pool is, kind of that way, so they manage that whole property, and then they also responsible for the memorial building. So there's basketball games, tap game, they're all fun things that are in there. So they have, I think, once a month, the year, board directors meet, and they discuss different activities that they can have at the park. So Commissioner Taylor mentioned the Fall Fest, so they do that, which they have pumpkin, pumpkin, and all kinds of different things. And then they do Christmas lights, and then they do a fishing derby, a spring event. So it's really trying to get more people to enjoy some of the community assets that we have.
And how many, how many, how many times do a year they meet?
I believe about 12, once a month.
Oh, once a month, so I'm wondering for sure, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but I was for sure. Just so they got to just how many times they have to least participate.
You know, and all the boards, kind of a fun one, because you get to decide different outdoor activities as well as activities that happen in the memorial building. So I represented from the type we get, so if one of you or one of your friends wants to step out, it would be awesome.
You get to help plan the next cool event. I mean, have you ever showed up at something that adults plan and thought? I mean, that's why we, that's why we want a high school student on. Yeah. Don't grow up too fast, because this is your future. But, but that's the sort of thing, like, something that would be fun at the park, we could use that kind of input, like what kids now would like. I mean, y'all did that Pokemon game and stuff, right, where things were hiding? I mean, maybe that could be done there, you see how little I know. There's, there's a lot to learn. Or what was? What was it called? Pokemon, no, see, I was right.
I've just never done anything that's.
See what I mean? We just had to think it, and she went and got it.
She overheard it, and she got on it.
Well, Mr. Heer, thank you for bringing them by. We appreciate it.
He wants to take a picture.
Oh.
I got four of us left, yeah.
Okay.
Could we have the kids stand in front of you?
Sure, sure. Thank you guys for coming in. I liked your presentation and the way you did it.
It was good. You can, you can come on up, Ruth.
Was that, did Commissioner Taylor say something that you'd already heard this morning? Thank you. What about not growing up too quick? All right, now something silly.
You're that guy.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank y'all for coming. Thank you.
If they, if I'm going to guess, that you all are registered to vote if you are 18.
Excellent, thank you. We're not going to get to see you today, because we're in here, and that would normally be something we would.
Yeah, but certainly see Sarah Tucker down in our elections office, if any of them need voter registration in the form, or if they want to check their registration, get registered.
Awesome. Thank you.
Okay, you guys have a nice day.
Thank you.
Learn a lot. Okay. We're going to go ahead and move our break up to now. You're welcome.
I know, I had to do this.
Morning.
Hey, John.
Morning.
How are you?
I have to sign, the sheriff too. Yeah, your name is on there too. Yeah, well, I gave it back to Ruth.
Okay.
Yeah, you had to sign that.
And I signed the refunds too.
Oh, yeah.
Nobody ever bring me.
Good yourself? You feeling better?
Yeah, yeah. Yes. Wasn't fine, but.
Yeah, but occasionally, I still have to, to use inhalers to open everything up.
Really? Yeah, it's interesting, because you have, you have some, I feel, tour, so you're a waterkeeper. You know, you have long lax, through the school. And when they ask you.
I was going to say, I wasn't too, that was before I retired, I did a lot of third day.
Yeah, third day, but yeah.
When I wasn't in here, I didn't, I didn't hear any of that.
Hey, Jeff. You and Jean at odds this morning? You're at different sides of the room. Okay. Yeah.
I'm going to see what the best possible.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to get to our next part. John Stumpf is here with us this morning for consideration of a supplemental resolution amending and modifying certain provisions of the resolutions authorizing the insurance of commercial development revenue bonds, Series 2010B and Series 2012 Arrow West Virginia Project, and approving certain amendments to the after-mentioned bond.
A forementioned bond.
Well, whatever, a forementioned bond. Okay.
That was a mouthful, yeah.
That's not bad.
It is, it is a mouthful. Good morning, commissioners. As we've discussed at a couple of prior occasions, the Boy Scouts of America, as part of the bankruptcy proceeding, are currently involved in, have asked the county commission for certain amendments to the bonds which were issued in 2010 and 2012. It is important to note that the bonds issued in 2010, there were actually two series, A and B, each for $50 million, and the A has been paid off, and B has been substantially paid down. Perhaps the most important thing to state or reaffirm for the commission, and also for anyone in the audience who are on Zooms, these bonds are conduit bonds, county commissions, so in other words, the commission itself has absolutely no legal responsibility or liability in any way, shape, or form for these bonds, whether financially, or in any other way. In fact, the actual bond itself on the form says that. So today, we're, we're before the matter, before the commission is simply to the consideration of the supplemental resolution which amends the terms.
We need service because they're going to know better than anybody. We want to extend the line out this way. So then the PSD will work and maybe arrange some grant funding. And then we will, we work with them on actually getting that project done and in the ground. And then we take over kind of the operations and maintenance portion up and forward. So it's kind of a win-win.
Yeah, I've, I've looked at all the recently I've, Mr. Hayes, Hayes.
Kenny, Kenny Hayes, yeah.
I've talked to him and he's got me all the maps of the projects that y'all are doing. And I just had some questions that anybody that lives in them districts. Even though y'all took over the, y'all have a partnership.
Right.
New Haven. It's their district.
Correct, correct.
So anybody that lives in that district. They can be a, I mean, I don't know whether you know this or not, but it is their district.
Right, right.
I just wanted to verify.
Yeah, we, we.
I mean, I thought so after I read some of this stuff, but I'm not a lawyer like Ms. Taylor.
Yeah.
And I want, I want.
I'm a criminal lawyer now.
Now that you.
It's always said this in the. I'm a lawyer too, but I try to keep it rapid.
Right. I mean, it's just like, he's always getting me with stuff. I'm like, I represent criminals and children.
You should have any questions. I was waiting for that.
There you go, yeah.
And I just had to ask to verify what I thought was correct.
And we attend the New Haven PSD board meetings regularly. So we're there and it's, it's a good partnership and we've had a good relationship with, with Mr. Hayes and the rest of the boards. And I think it's successful.
Okay. I just think there was some stuff thrown up a little while back. Nobody really understood it.
Yeah.
So I don't, I don't research myself and, and that's what I come up with, but I wanted to ask you to make sure.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We're going to talk about future private partnerships as well. So always keep that in mind.
Absolutely.
There's an influx of federal money coming, which we do not have access to, but our communities do. So of course, keep that in mind.
Well, I'm gonna tell you, after I looked at it, I've got all the PSDs. And I just wanted to know myself, Joe, I'm not taking, I want to know myself, who hasn't, who does not have water, doesn't have, does not have sewer. People does not realize in Fayette County, who still doesn't have public water.
Yeah.
And the sewer to me is, I mean, I'd rather have water than sewer, but you just wouldn't dream it after I look at all this.
Right, yeah. It's amazing people that will, will have to drive and, and truck water to their house and their, their neighbors a couple of doors down might have water. So it's, if those are the perfect type of opportunities, say, let's see if we can do an extension here and get these folks served.
Well, that's why I was looking at it myself personally, just so I could see what was going on in Fayette County. Look at all of that. I wouldn't take nothing away from any other commissioner, but just to know myself what was going on.
Well, as Fayette County kind of gears up for growth or forward to, that'll be a big one then.
Okay, it was thirty-eight percent was the percentage of people without water.
Wow.
The last that I saw. Forty-six percent don't have sewers.
Yeah, yeah.
I thought it'd been more than that, looking at the map.
Yeah.
But I, I'm not sure.
But with sewers, it's a different animal because you just can't run a bendy line.
Right.
You've got to have all the manholes and lifts there.
Right, yeah.
Um, but with water, of course, it can bend around the mountain and go.
But that's always a challenge. Yeah, I'm as a native West Virginian, it's, it's, uh, you know, some of the natural beauty that the state provides is great, but it also makes it really hard to do things like get water and wastewater service to some of these areas because it's, it's almost cost prohibitive sometimes. It's like, we can reach five people out here, but it costs ten million dollars to get the lines there. So it's, it's a challenge for sure. But we're happy to, happy to work on it, try to provide solutions where we can, so.
Thank you.
Absolutely. We appreciate the time. So thank you all.
Good, and I'll see you on the thirtieth.
Sounds good. Yeah, thank you. All right, thank you.
Well, thank you. We will, we appreciate that.
Yeah, I got, I got to the door. That's.
We want to get back to this list.
Either that or we can take another group.
We have five minutes for the break.
Yeah. Okay, Ruth, let's go and back to yours. I think we could probably get through that one.
Uh, the next one is. Request from the Bridge Day Commission Chairman Ben Sullivan to appoint Petra J. Stevenson to the vendor advisor seat. Due to the resignation of Philip Peewish. He resigned because he was angry and frustrated like I was about the vacillating. On the Bridge Day decision. So, um. I want to know whether this has been advertised.
Where is this gentleman from? Actually, hold on, let me look at it.
Can you hear me?
Is this PJ?
Yeah, it's PJ Stevenson.
Okay, I'm never, for first time.
Okay, Becky, have you advertised this position?
No, it hasn't been advertised. We discussed it at the last Bridge Day Commission meeting. Um, we discussed it after Philip resigned and then we talked about it at the last Bridge Day Commission meeting on October twentieth and PJ was nominated. The paperwork was filled out and submitted. This is an unexpired term for Philip's seat and a volunteer position.
And next year, uh, April is his term's up, correct? Oh, twenty twenty-three. I missed the year, I sure did.
Yeah, I think he was just reappointed, um, April of twenty twenty-one. So it's a two-year term.
I read it this morning, but I missed it. I gotta go back.
I would like this and all future positions to be advertised, um, before they're brought to us. For selection and decision.
I, I agree with that. Yeah, I agree with that because who else knows to do that?
We have, I mean, not that I'm, don't appreciate that we have the same, a lot of the same people who are. Volunteering on these volunteer boards and all the time they put into it, but I just want to make sure that others who, who might have the desire to participate have, have the opportunity to apply. So Becky, if you could do like we asked for the park board, if you could advertise it for two weeks. And then submit the, the applicants to the commission, then we can consider what you have then, even if it's just Ms. Stevenson at the time, um, or appointment at that point.
Okay.
And if you provide the information to Amy, she can put it on our Facebook page and the commission website.
Okay, I'll send it over to her.
Thank you.
Okay, the next thing is a request from Golly River PSD to reappoint Teddy Elliott for a six-year term to expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven.
I have no problem with Teddy. He's done a good job.
Get back and forth on these. I mean, because again, I'd like to see other people have the opportunity to serve in these positions if they're interested. In the case of the PSDs, they tend to have experience and. The ones who have been serving. What are you, what do you guys think about that though? Just in general terms, like, like if we're, if we're advertising for. A vac, a vacating or reappointment, like should we compete reappointments? I definitely want to compete any vacancy. Or not compete, but advertise a vacancy to, to allow people to apply.
Yeah, I would, I don't.
But on reappointments, do we want to do that for every reappointment or not?
I, I don't.
We're on certain types of boards or not certain types of boards because some of these reappointments, like for example, if we reappointed. Um, everybody to a certain board and they didn't have a fair representation of the county, for example.
Well, that, very representative county is, that's different.
Yeah.
This, this is probably.
Well, PSD is, is regional, is local.
It's good districts.
So for PSDs, maybe we can.
Yeah.
Do reappointments.
Yeah, I don't have fun with that, but representing all the counties, like we waited in the planning commission to get somebody to do it. Yeah, I agree with that.
Okay. What do you think? Same?
Same thing.
Okay. All right. Then I'm, I move that we reappoint Teddy Elliott to the Golly River PSD for a six-year term.
A second. Okay, we have a motion, second to reappoint Teddy Elliott to a six-year term with Golly River PSD. Whose. Whose term will be up on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven. All those in favor?
Bye.
I generally know what, uh, direction the PSTs are taking and what else going on, so. It's someone that's, that's there and working hard, working for the people, which Teddy is doing. I think this is a good move to go ahead and.
Well, we need them to tell us too, if somebody's not.
Yeah.
All right, the next. Is a question from Tiffany Cottle for President Brennaman to sign the twenty twenty-one Homeland Security Direct Program Award Document for sixty-five thousand.
This is the. This is the grant that pays the salaries for. Kevin and Tiffany here.
Do we know who is running the nine-one-one center in Kevin's absence?
One of them.
It needs to be one person. Is it one person?
It's divided by their.
Of the.
That is not how it works. Okay. All right. So I move that we approve the grant. And we'll fund our nine-one-one director and his assistant.
A second. Okay, we have a motion and second for the sixty-five thousand dollar grant award. All those in favor?
Aye.
The next one is a person.
Unless you want it during the break because we just took a break. I didn't want to do that.
Do we, should we go into executive session and talk about it real quick?
Yeah, let's just knock it out instead of taking a break. We need a break. We can take a quick break on the way back.
Okay.
All right. I move that we go into executive session to discuss item twelve on the exhibit list, the personnel matter, performance compensation for county employees, and the nine-one-one coordinator job description.
A second. Okay, the time is yet thirty-two. We're going to executive session and we'll be back for shortly. Okay, um, we are back out of executive session at eleven oh-two. And Commissioner Taylor will give us a rap.
Okay, well, we discussed promotions for a number of county personnel and their performance. And have decided that we would like to give a salary increase to our maintenance director from his current salary of thirty-two thousand eight dollars to thirty-six thousand. This will get him into the. Exempt. Category. He comes in for a bunch of overtime. He would no longer be billing overtime. And his salary should cover what his overtime normally averages out. We also decided to promote or add, do a salary increase for our maintenance. Pretty much our deputy supervisor Ricky from ten forty-eight an hour to twelve forty-eight an hour, and this is based upon his consistent. Twelve dollars. That's right. We are changing it to twelve fifty. Thank you, Anthony. Commissioner Brennaman wants even numbers here. So, um, so from ten forty-eight an hour to twelve fifty an hour. Due to his stellar performance and work ethic and position within the office. Further, um, we voted to, or not voted, but we. Have decided we would like to give a raise to him in the maintenance department from ten forty-eight an hour to eleven fifty an hour. A raise for Peggy in the maintenance department from ten dollars an hour to ten fifty an hour. And a raise, I'll do the math on this one. For Matt from eleven sixty-four an hour to. Twelve, I'm going to make it twelve fifteen an hour instead of twelve fourteen. And those are the maintenance department raises that we discussed. I move that we implement these raises effective next payday.
A second. Okay, we have a motion, the second, on effective pay raises that Commissioner Taylor told you about. All those in favor?
Aye.
We have another pay raise we discussed, and that is our. New chief financial officer who's been performing above and beyond our expectations. She currently makes thirty thousand dollars a year. We would like to also increase her salary to move her into the exempt category. So the salary increase would be six thousand two hundred fifty-eight dollars even. Total salary would go from thirty thousand dollars per year to thirty-six thousand two hundred fifty-eight dollars per year, and she has taken over. Backup payroll, um, the financial responsibilities that our county administrator had been performing. And she is, has been working with them. She plays a major role in the budget process and she streamlined our P-card statement process and has come up with some other innovative ideas to help. Better streamline our county budget procedures. So I move that we, and that's county administrator's recommendation, and I move that we approve that raise effective next pay period.
A second. Have a motion in the second on another raise. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Third thing we discussed, based upon the recommendations of the nine-one-one center. Consultant that we hired, um, we believe we do need to. Create a position that we eliminated earlier this year with some modifications to it. To manage the nine-one-one operations. The current director has, has not been able to fulfill all of those responsibilities as he believed he could. And so we have a draft position description that all of us are going to take a look at and we're going to put it on a future agenda. To approve and advertise, but at this time, there were no decisions made about that. We just will present a copy of a draft position description and. Some of my colleagues and I have already noticed, um, some things we'd like to add to it. So we're going to put that on, is the next meeting on the eighth? Fifteenth. So, um, December fifteenth, we'd like to have an agenda item, um, discussion and decision creating a. Nine-one-one deputy director position.
A second. I don't think we have to do it.
I don't think we do.
That's the absolute second.
You're just, all about the teamwork, making the dream work. Okay, so. That is it for the executive session.
Okay, let's, uh, get back to the manners of him. Uh, Gabe.
Listener. In your packet, you should have a draft letter, that's a cover letter for FY twenty-two, US EPA Brownfield Grant. I'm currently working on closing out our FY eighteen and taking another shot at this one. We applied for FY twenty-one, got a hundred and twenty-three, had a hundred and thirty points, and that wasn't good enough. So. We are trying again. So again, the letter in front of you does articulate the project. Some, somebody tell, you have any more questions about that? Be happy to answer those.
I'll wait the other two commissioners to go there. I've got some questions.
Right, 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 quick, like, uh, we are applying for two hundred and seventy-nine, uh, nine hundred and seven, two hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars, one hundred and seventeen dollars. So, um. Yeah, so almost twenty thousand dollars for assessment activities targeted at Oak Hill, really downtown Oak Hill corridor. With the prominent structure of Collins Middle School property.
Well, just. I mean, while I am in favor of helping the municipalities. Where it's needed. Oak Hill is a very well-funded municipality in this county, and I don't understand why we are applying for grants on its behalf.
It is, um. I'll say that the funding that we're applying for, since, uh, as the county commission, can be used anywhere in Fayette County, anywhere in the jurisdiction. We write these grants, say, we, those folks that are applying for DPA grants, using the best narrative. And the narrative that Oak Hill has the opportunity to capitalize on the economic development coming with the, the national park. Solid narrative that, that helps us articulate how we have an opportunity for business development in downtown corridors and that. There are a number of structures that are vacant, underutilized in Oak Hill. We can show that. We can show that on a map.
You know, and I, and I agree with Ms. Taylor, and I, I wanted to hold off a little bit, but. Are we talking about the school?
We're talking about the schools as well. Yes, uh, that's, that's a big one.
I've got a list. Now, this, and I agree with her, not in the municipalities, you know, and I, I hate to be, I'm trying to be as nice as I can about this case. Municipalities, most of them have, I mean, that Oak Hill does very well, and I'm sure that they can apply to this. But I got a list, a small list of all the properties that could pertain to this, Route sixty. I, the whole from, from Montgomery all the way to Meadow Bridge. And me, I don't know the other two commissioners feel about it, but Route sixty is a scenic highway.
And if awarded, we could use the funding on Route sixty to send the, to send Fayette County.
Says in here. Says Oak Hill.
And that we're looking for a good narrative.
Well. Now. After reading this. And I read, Ruth pulled this up for me and I read a little bit about the grants. I, I, I don't think that that will be approved, and I may be wrong. Reason he wasn't approved last time is what reason?
Uh, we just missed seven points. So they, they missed, I missed, you know.
Same project.
Didn't articulate enough about environmental justice. I didn't articulate.
Same project.
Same project, but missed a few points.
Well, I don't, I will just don't think, I think, and I don't know how, you know, I don't know the other two commissioners feel about it, but I think scenic highway sixty would pertain more to this, and it's not in a municipality, and basically that's what this forum is. County.
Any, yes, anywhere in the county. I mean. But I already have letters of support from the NRG RDA from Oak Hill, from downtown, uh, downtown destination, destination downtown Oak Hill. Again, if we're able to get the funding. We can use it anywhere in the jurisdiction. It's a matter of, of good narrative.
How is that so? I mean, that just, that makes me uncomfortable to, to ask for money for one thing and then allocate it to something else.
Well, yeah, yeah.
Right, but this, from guidance from the Northern Brownfield Assistance Center. And from my experience with the Brownfield, the FY eighteen Brownfield Grant that we had. Yes, the narrative is important, but they're not asking us about, did you make sure you used it in Smithers and Montgomery? They, they just want to make sure that we are assessing properties and reporting acreage that's been redeveloped or there have been hazards mitigated. The goal is to just get the funding and then we can use it as the county commission sees fit.
Just a small amount of the properties on sixty. I haven't been busy this much. Gabe, I, I still have one glaring thing on this. When it wasn't a utilized school, it went back to the Collins family. Collins family, then it went to Virginia Tech. It's still in Virginia Tech's name. It's not even in Oak Hill's name, the Board of Education name. It's still in the Collins name, the last that I heard.
Well, I've talked to, uh, to Superintendent Hope about this and they are on board with the redevelopment planning activities. And should we get funded, some sort of, you know, letter from them to county commission articulating. Access to, to the site. Should cover, that's how, that's how I've worked in the past. And Smithers, we worked with Mr. Bozorth to get access to the long acre property to be able to do the environmental assessments that will help set us up for redevelopment planning activities. So side access is something we'll have to take a look at, but Board of Education signs off on the, the side access forms, then.
I don't think it's just side access. I think it's a matter of using grant money that could go to something else to improve personal property. That doesn't belong to a government entity. It belongs to, you know.
Yeah.
Someone else.
My understanding, my understanding is that as long as it's used for educational purposes, the Board of Education has the right to.
No, according to the, well, Steve, you can.
We, we presently have access to the property because we still maintain a school on the property. We have a building. We hold our fit auto body class on the property. So it's under our jurisdiction because we still maintain a school.
Okay, but.
It realistically. If this grant goes through and eventually. Down the road, if it's funded, demolish all that property. We're trying to get ownership of that property to Virginia Tech, right?
We try to, we try to get it to Virginia Tech?
Yes.
Because it's still in the Board of Ed.
That's correct, but ultimately, we, we don't own the property. We have a right to use it as long as we maintain the school. Once we own it and it's, the buildings are demolished, we have long-term plans to move the maintenance department that's right around the corner here in the bus garage to location.
Okay, but you said maintain the school.
We have a school.
It wasn't maintained.
No, no, we have a school there now. We have a building with an auto body shop that it's, if you go up to the side of the property in front of the old gymnasium, there's a building, it's a school that we still have classes in.
I wondered what he was doing there.
Yeah, it's auto body. It's been there since, for three years. It was moved from Valley High School.
Isn't that where Sal's is too? Is that the same?
No, they're at the elementary school, the old elementary, or the old high school.
Okay.
The Collins Middle School property was the impetus for looking at Oak Hill in general and to, to weave together a narrative that makes sense. And is compelling for the application. Collins Middle School is near the downtown corridor. The downtown corridor has other places that can be redeveloped. If we are able to do some site assessments and then figure out what kind of infrastructure needs they have, uh, work with the NRG RDA to start marketing those. Uh, it feels like a good opportunity. Again, it's, it's a good narrative to get the funding and we would use ideally funding over Collins Middle School and other properties in downtown corridor. It also opens up the opportunity to use it anywhere in the jurisdiction of Fayette County.
See, I don't, I don't see, I mean, I, like, my spidey sense is tingling about asking for money for one purpose and not using it for that.
We would use it for Collins Middle School and downtown properties in Oak Hill.
Yeah, yeah, it wouldn't be used like we're talking about on sixty if we wanted it.
It could, it could.
Well, that's what he's saying, and I'm saying, I don't think it's proper to apply for a certain justification and then divert the money.
Where in this does it say we could do that? Because it says right here, location.
I would absolutely love to get you, um, an email from, uh, my project manager from the FY eighteen that says as long as you.
An email doesn't mean nothing to me. I want something in code or something in writing that says that we have the ability to do that. I don't know whether, I mean, maybe I'm wrong. Somebody can say anything in an email, but if it's in code or writing, it's a little bit different. There's no way you can leave it.
The grant that I wrote in two thousand eight and for FY eighteen.
A second. Counselor. I, I would, I would like for you to weigh in on this.
I mean, I'd have to look into it. I mean, this, this isn't something I can immediately answer to.
But is your spidey sense tingling, because mine is, I'm just, I'm thinking, okay, we're requesting money for X. Even if they don't follow up and confirm that we spent it like we said we would, if they did. We, we wouldn't have, we wouldn't have used it for what we requested it for, which I think could have long-term implications.
It even target, the target area says right here in Oak Hill.
In Fayette County.
That, right down here, in the target, because you've got a target, you've got a target, a population area. And what it says is population, this is a target area. Oak Hill, and it says, because it's got to be ten thousand or less, is what I read. Yeah, it'd be ten thousand or less, and you're in the eight thousand one hundred and seventy-nine range of population. And, and, but, go ahead, I'll let you finish on what you said, you had a grant that was approved, and you were getting ready to tell me.
In two thousand eighteen.
Yeah, you changed it to something else, is that what you was getting ready to say?
Narrative targeted Montgomery, Third Avenue, that corridor specified, that area. We use it in Smithers as well. And there is no problem with that. When I spoke to my project manager, she said, fine, as long as you are using it for the, the approved purposes, which is assessment and planning activities.
But Montgomery and Smithers are joint too.
Not, not tech, not technically.
Separate municipalities, but.
There, within Oak, within Fayette County were my, were my parameters, according to my project manager.
You got to the seven thirty first of August, right?
December one.
If I was on this board looking at all these grants that were coming in. Me, myself, I would say first. The school is not in the name of Fayette County schools, it says Fayette County can use the property. But it's actually owned by Virginia Tech. Where is a letter from Virginia Tech saying that this is good? Number two. If it is listed as the target area of Oak Hill. With the eight thousand one hundred and seventy-nine people. I'm going to look at where has smaller population. Because of the reduced number of population, or reduced number of people residents, they probably need more help. Now, I don't know how these grants work. We have a mayor that has worked on both sides of the table on grants, and I would look for your input on this too, please, Dr. Mayor.
Well, let me ask one more question before she says that, okay, these are, what you, what you're trying to do is, the school was trying to get the property back, correct?
Yes.
And that is to turn it over to Virginia Tech.
To get it from. Owned by Virginia Tech, buildings are owned by Fayette County Board of Education.
Okay, but you're trying to get the land, the property itself back.
Right.
Okay, well, that means there will be no tax base there, right?
I mean, these buildings are permanent structures.
Yes.
I mean, that's the West Virginia law, they're permanent structures, whoever owns the land, there's a bill.
That's correct.
Even if we build them.
Yeah, it doesn't matter.
Yeah.
If you improve somebody else's land, and you know that it's their land.
Right.
That's where my hangup's coming from.
Well, mine too, on.
Anthony, I think. Original legal documents way back in nineteen fifty. This problem is still a lot. I believe there's, there's paperwork saying buildings are Fayette County school system.
Like I said, that, that doesn't exist in West Virginia law.
When you say believe, have you read them?
No, I have not.
Okay, then it's just like that email, I'm not trying to be hard, but it's just like the email, you get emailed with somebody, it's not proof of anything.
Dr. Mayor.
Okay, so, for the record, I'm not going to respond as Dr. Mayor. I'm going to respond as the former Economic Development Representative. For the U.S. Department of Commerce Economic Development Administration, covering West Virginia and Maryland. According to rules and regulations of the Economic Development Administration. His job it is to place millions of dollars' worth of grant funds. In their territories. With project handler. Is the final say. On the award and the management of any award. And that project manager is required by agency regulations to check with their attorneys. Before issuing any sort of opinion to an applicant. I have not read, this is another chapter, I have not read the email, I've not read the application. And I've not read the NOFO, which is the Notice of Permanent Opportunity. I've not read any of that. But I didn't, with my many years of experience allocating grant funds. That the project managers word that the project. If you make an application and it is accepted, there's probably been a lot of conversations between the applicant and the agency. So that before the agency approves that award, that project manager knows. And approves what you want to do with the funds. So, having said all that, I give myself all of that room to back out of those statements because I haven't read any of this stuff. I believe that if the project manager has said that they approve what is being put forward. Then with that agency, that's gospel. The other thing I, I want to tell you is, it's, it's not unusual. For a funding agency to tell an applicant, any applicant. That this is what we want to hear. If we hear this, then we will fund you. And we know in these conversations that this is what we want to do. Now, I don't know, I'm not getting in these conversations, but to characterize what is being offered here today is unusual. In the grant world, it's not. It, it's really not. Okay, as, as our commission president said, I've been on most sides of those desks. It would take a lot of years to justify and explain why granting agencies do what they do.
I, I would also just like to add, while I personally feel that your goal to help the small areas is very, very admirable. When looking at these grants and reviewing them, usually the board looks to where the most good can happen. Where the most amount of people can be affected, so a larger population would carry some more weight. They also look for partnerships, and I think this is a unique opportunity because there's multiple partnerships happening. With the Board of Education, with Oak Hill, with Fayetteville, it's not helping just Oak Hill. It would potentially then move the maintenance building out of Fayetteville and move, you know, some opportunity to that area. So it's the coordination and the partnerships that they see multi-layers, as well as helping as many people as possible.
And they do look for partnerships and collaboration. And they look at partnerships, those are like the buzzwords, what's in, in grant.
Okay, well, well, thank you for your input. On things that I don't understand, well, I, I asked for a lot of input, and I appreciate everything that you've said.
I, I still have several concerns with it. Among them are the fact that the board does not own those buildings, so making improvements to them. With this money would be making improvements to Virginia Tech property. I understand and, and agree that, that that business corridor needs some work, I mean, in Oak Hill. I mean, we, we know that with regard to Ansted, we know that with regard to Oak Hill and Mount Hope, that being able to come off of nineteen and to go into these. Towns that there should be something to see and do once you get there, and. But at the same time, I do have concerns that, that our office at the county level, for municipality the size of Oak Hill or the size of Fayetteville. Both of which are very well-funded, that we focus more on county-wide projects. Things that involve the county itself, because those areas are not getting any attention without our help. So that, I have a concern about that, about the building. And, and, and this project in particular as a priority for the county. Not that it shouldn't or couldn't be a priority for a joint application between the city of Oak Hill and the town of Fayetteville. Or something like that. But. But as far as, you know, if, if the county had one shot at applying for this amount of money for projects, I mean, I think there are other things that. Would probably be a higher priority in my mind.
No, I, I was getting ready to say exactly the same thing. Fayetteville doesn't want the buses there, or they can work in conjunction with Oak Hill, that would be the other partner. But that way, the two municipalities benefit what they want. I mean, and then the county can concentrate on other county issues. I agree, I'm like you said, Mr. Taylor.
Look, the lapid buildings have been, have come up in every comprehensive planning we've been thus far. Again, this isn't specific, I mean, yes, the narrative is articulating a compelling project. Doesn't have to all be used in Oak Hill, you can look at those projects in other parts of the county. I can get more clarification for you on that. But this is a useful funding source, it's nimble, and it allows to us to do due diligence on structures that need to be demolished. And that's the goal for the Collins Middle School property, I'm not saying we're going to go into, the county's going to go in there and start building new buildings. But at least clear them off to give the Board of Education a blank slate, so they can start figuring out how to turn that back into educational asset.
Well, I was just saying they don't own it, they can't do anything.
There's still benefit in clearing those properties that have asbestos and lead and whatever else, not from sitting there for five years doing nothing.
Do you think Fayetteville would be, want to be involved in this?
I don't know.
But, I mean, that would be, I mean, I would, and it doesn't look like, if, if the commission wanted to change it to another area. Really, there's not that much you have to put in there. And, well, maybe I'm wrong, Gabe.
I have ten pages to do, to do, to articulate this case, and hit all the points they want me to hit.
So, we're not seeing the ten pages when this is.
I'd be happy to show you the ten pages if you're going to read through them, but it, it's, it's got to be, it's ten pages actually isn't much to articulate the case. For, for all this, given all the, all the information that they want. So, to include Fayetteville, to figure out how to make a coherent case for Route sixty, the areas that were, that are a little bit more nebulous. Just trying to hit Oak Hill's downtown corridor as the most populous area in Fayette County, as an area that has an opportunity to help expand the epicenter of. Tourism and the recreation economy beyond Fayetteville to benefit more community members, that's what we're going for as far as the narrative.
Ansted is a, is a much less poorly, I mean, it's poorly funded municipality.
We can use it in Ansted if we get the funding.
And it's, well, but I would, why can't you incorporate that into the request to start with, because like, that would be contagious with the.
The first time I read this grant, in, in two thousand sixteen, I focused on Golly Bridge, Smithers, and Montgomery. And were denied, and the feedback that I got was, focus on a more specific area. Second year, focused on Smithers and Montgomery, feedback was, focus on a more specific area. So I went to Montgomery and said, Third Avenue and Montgomery, Ferry Street, across from the Amtrak station, tourism opportunities, and we got funded. So, using that logic, focusing on an area that clearly articulates the economic opportunity is the strategy for the narrative. And so Oak Hill, again, given their proximity to the New York National Park and Preserve, and between Beckley along Route nineteen. Makes sense as far as creating a compelling economic opportunity, or showing a narrative that shows. With this funding, you can catalyze increased economic development Fayette County and help with the transition from extraction-based to a more outdoor recreation-based. And that's what the narrative, I'll be happy to pull down the narrative and show you what I have thus far.
Who, who approves these grants? This grant right here. DPA?
The Environmental Protection Agency has a grant review committee.
Same ones as those, the. Gabe, I applaud your passion for this project. But I could not put the. Out of my head that Virginia Tech owns this property. And not the school system. Anytime that we have an empty school and we transfer ownership, property goes with it because the school system owns it. And that's why it just keeps coming to me that, you know, Virginia Tech owns this property, and we're going to, we're going to knock it down, and they're going to end up taking it. Now, just a second, Gabe, please give me a chance to finish.
I agree with both commissioners, we have. We have a project that we would like to have completed. But we have more compelling areas that, that need help also. Whether it's Route sixty, Route sixty-one, anything through the valley, Golly Bridge. I just see more that can be done. And we know who owns the properties, now, if, if the school board, excuse me, yes.
It's a liability in Fayette County because it's in Fayetteville. And we've had, I've had success in the past, presenting property owners with deeds and basically saying, you got a mess here. You wanted to be your mess cleaned up, or you want to get it messed up. That's, that's another option to consider. I mean, if benefits Fayette County clean this up.
I think we should consider that option regardless of how we scope this particular grant request, but I think that's a good idea, I think.
Sorry, I would feel more comfortable if we had a letter from Virginia Tech that conveyed the property over to the Board of Education.
When I, when I learned that we didn't get the FY twenty-two proposal funded, contacted John Tugle of Region Four because they did get funded in FY twenty-one. And asked him if he, if all those funds that they got, same thing, greater amount, six hundred thousand dollars for assessment activities. They articulated they'd be working over in the Sam Black Church area as they look at whatever petrochemical hub, they're, they're working in that area. Called him and asked him, do you have funding left to do an assessment of the Collins Middle School property? He said that's number one on their priority list, because he lives over there in Oak Hill, he sees that building every day. And he sees it as an eyesore that needs to be addressed, seems like the Board of Education, I don't want to speak of Board of Education. Is currently pretty well-engaged in settling all their students into the new facilities. So, they're not focusing on trying to figure out how to, to take care of that Collins Middle School property. But providing them with some assistance was part of the thinking, at least understand the magnitude of the problem. So that they can figure out a funding source, a funding stream, a funding strategy, to start turning that back into an educational asset for Fayette County. That was the thinking initially, so we failed for FY twenty-one, we're punting and trying again for, for twenty-two. Region Four has said they will help out, just in conversation with, with John Tugle. I encourage you to add, to follow up with him if you have questions about that, or I could shoot him an email to get confirmation on that, but they will do the assessment. Once the assessment's done, then we can start looking at redevelopment planning, which is another part of this, this funding.
So, so what I'm getting at this is it's going to be used for education.
That's what, in, in conversation with Gary Hoag, I've had those, he would, they would like to see.
And another thing, why don't we know the whole adjust of the project? I mean, I'm not saying I still agree with it, but, I mean, is, is it, is it going to be educational, is it going to be, I mean.
That's what I understand, the, the moving the bus garage to, and, and a new maintenance facility.
That you're not going to be teaching anything up there.
And they would incorporate diesel automotive technology and energy management systems into the maintenance. into the maintenance and the the bus garage, the diesel facility. So.
School mechanics.
Yeah, broaden the offerings of.
Somebody talked just about that to start with. I mean, I'm not saying I still agree with it, but I mean, knowing the whole project and somebody not just taking it, taking it. And and how and who will own it. I don't know. Is that specified in any of this?
In the application it is, yes.
It sounds to me more like a way to for Fayetteville to get the bus garage out of Fayetteville and put it somewhere else. And John Tugle seeing seeing something in his own neighborhood, you know, is does it to me make it a number one priority? That's that's what it sounds like to me. I mean, I, you know, I have stuff in my neighborhood I'd like to have fixed, but I don't prioritize that stuff because I see it every day. I just this.
It's been sitting there empties since two thousand fifteen, doing nothing. I'm I'm, you know, some some initiative to help out the Board of Education to get that taken care of was was the thinking and having conversations with Gary Hoag and their facilities manager.
If 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 commission table, you have the December first to to send this in, right?
I do.
Yes, the send has to be ready to by December.
Evidently, he's got ten pages ready, basically.
Yeah, I'd be happy to share them with you. They they need a few edits.
What I'd like to do is you finish your edits, like your table, and give us the full what this facility is going to actually be used for instead of instead of we not, but go ahead.
I only have ten pages. I can't say every last little bit, but it does say in there that according to Fayette County's comprehensive plan and Oak Hill's comprehensive plan, both of those comprehensive plans understand that our educational outcomes are closely tied to economic development.
And and I will tell you, the mechanic stuff, and I don't understand that. I mean, I I understand talking about diesel mechanic school, is that what you just said a second ago?
I'm talking about improving our educational outcomes and and creating a skilled workforce by improving our educational system.
It's not just, is it just moving the buses or is it is it something to do with?
It's broadening FIT Fitz offerings for technical education.
Well, that, even though you won't have room in your ten pages, you could write us a summary and something like that.
It's got to be in there somewhere.
Oh, no, it's in there. Yes, that that in in conjunction, looking at the downtown corridor and the sites that are underutilized, vacant, abandoned, understanding the environmental liabilities there while also broadening the workforce development that's happening over at FIT creates a great opportunity for entrepreneurship in Fayette County to create the small businesses that are going to help build us a resilient economy. That's the that's the slant, that's the angle. Those two together help create momentum to help transition our economy to whatever's next for Fayette County.
Commission, look, Gabe, I'd like to take it to get the information and maybe we do a special. I mean, I mean, if if.
Yeah, I definitely want more information, but let me. And can I ask you a question? So in the grant world, back when you were on the other side of things. If you saw, you know, one application from a county. It if you, could you see multiple applications of a county get approved? Or would you guys look at it and say, well, we've already given them, you know, two hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars for this one project? Why would we fund this project on Route sixty?
An agency would look at it two ways. One is they are under, most agencies, I mean, you know, from EDA.
Right.
Most agencies are under in-house guidance to allocate geographically as freely as possible. That's number one. Not number one priority, but number one inherent. The second is they do look at projects discreetly. So if there were two projects in one geographic area that both were so.
Meritorious.
Thank you. Didn't come out right. And there was funding near the agencies, they would fund those. They do take into consideration geography.
Well, I've I've talked to DEP personally, I spent an hour with them on how to make these grants that they approve more granable. And one of the reasons, one of the things that they told me, they gave me a a big outlook on everything, but one thing they said is Fayette County has six projects right now. We can't fund one of them without the other five being upset about it. So we're not going to fund any of them.
Well, I'm sorry to do that from any agency represented.
Yeah, well, no, I know, I understand it because the total of them was, the total assets that they was looking at was like twenty-one million. I'm going off memory, was twenty-one million dollars that they had allocated to the whole state of West Virginia. I mean, actually, basically, that's just what they said. That's one of the things that they did say, say.
Sitting in that chair back in the day, I never once made a decision based on if I made this decision. These five are going to be angry at me. My job was to do the best for the constituents where I had the authority to allocate funds.
Yeah, if there's only so much funds allocated, they, I don't think there'll be. How much is allocated for Fayette County?
Under.
Under the, yeah, do you know? Is there any amount allocated for state of West Virginia?
This is a national competition.
So state of West Virginia doesn't have a certain amount of money?
No, this is, this is just goes to the, this, I'm competing with California and New York.
Okay, so you've been with all US.
Yep.
How much money in the US is that?
Uh, I would have to double check on that. I feel like it's five million, but I have to double check.
That's not much.
Yeah, I know, it's very competitive.
Okay, I just, we're we're forty-five minutes behind.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Gabe, I believe the commission is asking for the complete report. A copy.
Yeah, I'm happy to give it to you as is. I'm still making edits, but they're 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 not significant. I'm at eleven pages, ten.
Each commissioner is asking for a copy of the entire grant so that we can go through it. And then we will meet with you again.
That's what I'm looking at on here. We need to give them enough time to make any updates we want. I was thinking maybe Monday, the twenty-second. Gabe, are you going to be in the office? Okay, so that'll just give us a few days to look at what he sent. Could you get that to us today?
Absolutely, but again, it's not quite polished.
Oh, no, I I'm not looking for polished, I'm looking for substance, but I mean, if there's a way to I would feel more comfortable even, I and I believe you and and Ms. Cavalier that that of how things work, there's how they appear to work and how they actually work. I I believe you that that's true. But I'm I may want to incorporate a little more language to accommodate some other projects we've been discussing in here. Or something that may come out from the comp plan or answer, some, just something to give us at least apparent flexibility to to stand outside of the bounds of this.
Do you know if anybody else in Fayette County has found a grant this type?
I don't.
And you said you have letters of support from NRG RDA. Did you get them from Fayetteville and Oak Hill as well?
From Oak Hill, from Oak Hill, from Board of Education, from NRG RDA is pending, they're on the way. But yeah, I'll show, I'll forward those along with.
I don't need to see them. I just I just was asking. When we got them. Okay, so the twenty-second, you want to do a Zoom special meeting, Zoom meeting? What time? Ten AM?
And I'll be in here so we can have the Zoom on.
Next item.
Let's uh with the things that we need to cover today, the next item can can it wait until Monday, the twenty-second? Okay, thank you.
Thank you all.
So I move that we postpone those items. Ten forty-five to the twenty-second at ten AM.
A second. To move the decisions.
To postpone.
Postpone the decisions until the twenty-second of November, ten o'clock. All those in favor.
Quick, quick break.
Okay, we we need a quick break. All of us do probably. Our next is the redistricting of Fayette County precincts and magisterial districts. Michelle, commissioners, I'm going to move down to take a look at these maps because we really can't see them up here. So if you'd like to move down, that's fine.
Do you want us to run through all six of the proposals or would you like to just the one that we did not see last time or what would you like?
I think the one we didn't see last time should suffice. We saw all the others. What about you guys?
Yeah, it doesn't matter to me. Anyway, I'm going to move down so that I can see them a little bit better. Because I can't. I've already looked at.
Yeah, I looked at it online, but I'll watch when you talk.
Make sure you talk about. Oh, now I'm going to have to move down.
Oh, you want to see it from up there here? So as we requested at the last meeting. Uh, the the mayors along Route sixty corridor asked if we could look at drawing a magisterial map that would include all of Route sixty over Route nineteen in the same district to help with their economic development projects that they're looking at and just kind of develop that area of the county a little bit. So we met for several hours on Monday morning. And we did come up with with a map that also met all the requirements that need to be separately and by days. So what it would do is several, my screen. Um, so again, I use kind of the same color scheme. The white area on this map is the Valley District. So it encompasses most of the western part of the county from Montgomery through Smithers over. But it takes the Valley District all the way over through Anstead and through to the Hiko area. And also includes the Lansing area and and parts there above the New River Bridge there at nineteen. Um, and then it wraps the valley then back around and takes in the Scarborough area again. That area is fairly populous up along sixty in terms of Fayette County. Um, so we then had to balance out those population numbers. Uh, so the New Haven District within the yellow area, which stretches over the eastern half of the county and goes up into the north there, leaves the Ramsey area and such in that eastern part in New Haven. And also wraps New Haven around the bottom of the map pulls both pulls my hope into New Haven as well as the PAX area. And then that leaves the central portion of the county as the plateau. City limits of Oak Hill would be in the plateau, some outlying areas of Oak Hill. As well as most of city limits of Fayetteville would be in the plateau. Some of it would still be in New Haven, the area up northern part near the as well as the New Haven wraps then around the Becca's area and takes in Thousand Oaks area in New Haven under this last map. Um, the numbers do come out within the parameter you're set. There's a four point one six percent difference from the largest district to the smallest. Uh, and so that is the the sixth and last proposal in front of the commission to choose magisterial.
What's the limit on difference?
It is classified bonus from the mean. I've been calculating that as a ten percent difference between the largest and the smallest. So our mean on this is thirteen thousand four ninety-six. We have forty thousand four hundred eighty-eight people in the county according to the twenty.
So that stays under the.
It does stay within the threshold.
Michelle, that one part up there, does it connect back to?
Yes, it does. It is all contiguous. Um, there's a precinct fifty-six would wrap around the top of precinct fifty-two. Um, and connects, it runs right along the New River Bridge area. There's actually no one lives in that little piece. Then you connect it. That's one of the criteria they have to be, each each district has to be.
What are the black lines?
Those are the precincts.
Seems like there are more precincts than there are.
Because of our population.
Yeah, we have, um, this map actually has forty precincts. And so, and actually, it's it's, well, I was kind of numbered out to late. There's, there are more precincts in New Haven than any, any of the others. Because again, the eastern half of our county traditionally is the farmland, so there's not, there's quite a lot of distance. As it would be over towards the memory, Smithers, more, there's no coal mining.
So the first three gaps had thirty-nine precincts, four or five had thirty.
This one has one extra, the other five had thirty-nine.
I thought two were consolidated or something, you told thirty-eight.
This one would have forty. I mean, there's a possibility to look at shifting a couple if we really, we have enough machines to do forty. We would have no extras. One broken election day, figure something out, but.
Michelle, since everyone's here, let's go ahead and put the other maps up.
Just, John, if you wouldn't mind, before we do, would you guys like to speak, Mayor of the Valley who proposed this? Kind of give us an idea of what you were thinking when you drew this out? Because I'd like to know what the, you know, what you think.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. In fact, I was going to ask, and one specific thing is how would this represent the valley better? Because that's what you was talking about. I've asked another representative, representative, he couldn't answer the question. And I was wanting to see if you can answer the question, how would this help the valley better?
Okay. So first of all, thank you very, very much for giving us this opportunity as mayors elected to represent our communities. And really, we reach out to neighboring unincorporated areas also. Um, I'm here not only as the mayor of Smithers, but the chair of the Upper Canal Valley Strategic Initiatives Council. Many of you are familiar with that. That is a very unique twice a government entity that is allowing us as communities to share resources, to go after grants together. Um, I serve as chair, Mayor England serves as vice chair. It's mainly because I missed a meeting and he made me chair. But he's also here as the director of the Midland Trail Association. Unpaid, but the the association was dying. We picked it up and we revised it. That's what we do to each other. So I'd also like to thank the commission. In the past, you have given us funding in Smithers to tear down really terrible buildings, right? Because Anthony was with us too. We couldn't have done that without your help. We couldn't have done that without your help and what you allowed us to do was to keep those funds after we sold the property and reinvest in generations. We really appreciate that. Commissioner Luises reminded me the other evening, uh, and I'm so glad he did. I mean, we get, we get caught up in trying to move forward and sometimes we forget a few things. And one of the things that we forgot was in the past, uh, with his leadership, the county allocated two hundred and fifty thousand dollars as match for a grant. We did not get that grant. Reason we didn't get that grant, we were told, was because the granting agency could see no context in which we were building trails. This was pre-announcement of the New River Gorge National Park. This was pre-announcement of the Mammoth Reserve. This was pre-announcement of the Hatfields and Mahhoys Trail System. That very same agency representative has now been up to talk with us three times. We've zoomed with her three times. She's excited now to take our application forward because now externally they see what we've always seen and that is we do have a context for trails and outdoor recreation. You jump in here any time you want. I'm going to give you a little context for the area and why we feel like we belong together. For those of you who are as old as I am, very few in the room, you will remember that Interstate sixty-four was supposed to follow Route sixty.
I knew that.
Because of an outside decision, that was changed. That took a lot of traffic, a lot of economic impact away from our communities. The town center mall was built in Charleston. What do you say has that to do with us? Retail died in our towns because you could climb in the chalk, in the car, you could go half an hour, forty-five minutes and you could have every shop you could imagine at your fingertips. West Virginia Tech. Morgan Town's decision to close our campus by their determination has had fifteen point two million dollars a year negative impact to our communities. And I say our communities, the college was in Montgomery. But apartments in places where people shop and places where faculty and staff lived are in all of our communities and went to school. That's right. Valley High School closed. Again, a decision from outside where we live, work and play. I could go on. Kroger's closed, writing closed, the car dealership shut, the furniture store closed. Because they did not see a reason to continue to invest in that area, we have to give them a reason.
We had our own department store and nobody, we were self-sustaining in that community.
And whether you agree or you disagree with these decisions that were made and the reasons for which they were made, the impact can be our, our communities are gassing for economic breath. We have a like topography. We have a like history and we want to work together to have a like future. These four mayors have come together and some of us have been in office for one and a half terms. Some of us have been in office for part three years of the term. One just found his chair in July. And one's been in there a little over a year, but together we have come together to work for a common future that's going to give us an economy and a culture that will serve our children and our population. I for one am here to ask you to please consider what the mayors who are elected to represent these votes see as a common bond among our communities, common economic bond and a common cultural bond. And to please give us the opportunity over the next ten years to rebuild.
I would like to add to that. The mayors, the four mayors from Anstead to Montgomery spent two hours last night on teleconference with West Virginia University and we are working in a regional covenant. Which is, you know, we haven't publicized it, but that's in the making, that's in the works. And we just think that, uh, by having this plan or a real close hybrid gives us the cohesion that we need with the, um, the four mayors working together and we've had several meetings. We're trying to pull those mayors into the strategic community council. We see no, I mean, we have, I don't think this plan has created any harm to any other magisterial district. I see no, I don't see anything that comes and, and we, we, we did not do a lot of changes on the bottom side. It just stands up a little further into the Anstead area. But as Mayor Cavalier said, uh, I respectfully ask you all to take into consideration our proposal. I know you have tough decisions to make. Uh, I've witnessed that here today. But we do ask that you give this, uh, your utmost consideration and consider it, give us the chance. We've took some gut punches down there, uh, as Mayor Cavalier alluded to. And we are working very hard and very diligently to get ourselves picked up out of butt. We would like the assistance of this commission and this redistricting to help us realize that, uh, we have a lot of team members out here that's pulling for us and trying to help us. And, uh, I'm not saying that to put anyone in a bad light. I know you're going to make the decision you make. I respect that decision. But I do ask that you give us very serious consideration and thank you for your time. And, uh, thanks, Michelle, for your time on Monday. That was very, uh, you have a, you have a star here. This lady is awesome. So thank you, Commissioner. Appreciate it. Yeah, I, I do want to ask the mission, the, the mayors one more time. I, I, I don't think anybody defines it. How will this help? I mean, nobody's told me how this, this changing them this way would actually help you in getting funding or, uh, help you in your, uh, whatever you, I mean, can you?
Or how would it hurt you if it happened?
Yeah, I mean, I, I need something to, and I asked another mayor earlier that. And that's all, that's the only thing I'm asking. How would this help you? And you said getting grants, you said you're working together. That would help you better if it was this way. I'd like to know. Can you explain that to me? I'm just curious.
So it, it's our view that we have a common history in this part of the county. We had common economic impacts to us in this part of the county. And working together, we can build a common future. What we would like to have are representatives from those communities from this, uh, structured district that live, work and play with us. That, that feel the impact of decisions. WB made the decision, nobody lives, worked or played in our area. They didn't understand what was going to happen. Others who have made decisions don't live, work and play with us. Please give us the opportunity to live, work and play together. We'll make decisions that we have to live with.
And Commissioner, I respect the question, um, but I would ask the commission. What would this do to harm anyone else in town? I mean, where do you, I mean, I would ask you the question that you asked us.
I'll tell you one concern I have about it. Um, the same reading problem I have with Thousand Oaks being in the Valley District I have with it being. That's one of my concerns because, because in thinking countywide, I've been concerned for the same reasons. So my whole, um, thrust on this redistricting is about making sure you're more represented by people who live among you. That's what the statute intended. And I mean, I represent New Haven and it's ridiculous. I live right down the street. And I, the majority of people I represent are across the river or up on a mountain. And there are a few here. But I'm not as in tune. I mean, even though I grew up down there, I'm still not as in tune as I was with the needs. I'm not in tune with what they need at the mountain and I feel like it's, it's an affront to them. They're not, you know, getting represented as well. I mean, I care and we all care. I mean, it's all of our dogs to represent the entire county. But I think the intent was the people need to be in tune with what the communities needed within the county. And, and so to have districts, right now, all three districts have an access to the plateau and that has been a concern. I, even before I entered office, I just thought, how could that be fair? You know, um, it, it just isn't. And, and, and if you read, you know, years and years worth of minutes, you'll see that all the money has been coming back. When you look around and you can see where the money's been born and not to y'all, you know that.
Well, and I think you, you guys, you kind of have a different perspective. The way you're looking at it, you're looking at it as political boundaries. You're looking at it as representation boundaries and we're looking at it from economics. We're actually looking at it as binding, uh, these groups together that share.
But that, but you could do that even with, you could do that with Fayette County. You could do that just like we talked about Oak Hill and, and Fayetteville. I mean, when you, when you're doing economically, you can do stuff together and, and co-opt together if you're not in the same district. That's what I.
But, but our representatives being pulled into other districts are going to vote for what's best for those districts.
I, I don't, I don't do that. No.
Well, I'm, I'm.
I don't, I don't do that.
I'm not talking.
I understand you, sir.
I, I understand, I understand.
Thank you.
But there's not going to be a perfect plan.
In, in the past, in the past, that has been a kind of a apparent, I mean, like, um, trend. I feel like this commission has broken that trend. But, but I, I do understand your concern about that because this is a ten-year decision.
It is. And there's not going to be a perfect plan. Please keep in mind we mayors have taken a long, hard look at this. We want to work together. We want representatives that will work together with us. That doesn't take away from you, sir, at all. I mean, you were the one who stepped up and, and, uh, and helped us with the match. Okay? We, we appreciate that. We're asking, we're asking for a district that the mayors believe that we can work with and that we can serve the residents who live. That, that's what we'd like. And I think we've put our time and, and our, and we've listened. Michelle has been extraordinary. You all have been extraordinary, even let us come as four mayors and, and make this presentation. So thank you.
And, and I want to say this too. I think, uh, we've, we've, we, we, pre-COVID, we started a Fayette County Mayor's Association meeting. We had a meeting in Fayetteville. I'm still, I still want to do that.
I, I agree.
All of that county mayors.
I said I was going to do something.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I.
We need to reap COVID attention. And, uh, I think we had a good first meeting. Mayor Cavalier couldn't make it because of the scheduling, but we had, uh, almost all the other mayors there. Um, there were only one or two that couldn't make it because of scheduling, but, uh, I don't want anyone to perceive that these four mayors are against anyone else or we're trying to.
No, I understand. I, I think we understand why you want this.
Yeah.
But to me, it doesn't help or hurt.
Okay.
I mean, I mean, it, I.
Something doesn't hurt.
Well, I mean, I, I really, I mean, if you look at, if you look at it, well, I'm not even going to go into.
I'm concerned that it hurts New Haven. That's, that's my concern. I, I, I agree with you that this is a good plan for the valley. I'm not sure it's the right plan for the entire county. Because I think pulling Thousand Oaks, which is the wealthiest arm of the plateau really geographically into an impoverished district like New Haven and the Valley, um, would, would give unfair weight politically. But that's, but that's, I didn't like it in the Valley District either.
When I found out it was a Valley District, I'm about moved acid. I couldn't believe it.
One of the things I personally purposely did is I did not look where any currently elected official on any level lives. I, I didn't want to persuade, uh, this one lives here, so we, we moved that person over there and X, Y and Z. We looked at it and, and I think calling can attest, we were, we were looking at it. Are you, are you a homogeneous area to what we're trying to accomplish? And that's what we believe will be. Every option I came up with drew me out of the district.
Thank you for your time. We appreciate it. Regardless of your decision, we just do want to continue to rebuild that area. That's all we did. Thank you.
Well, first I'd like to thank you for taking the initiative of doing this. No one else did it in the county. So thank you, Commissioner. Appreciate it.
Well, we appreciate all the help that y'all offered too. Thank you.
Okay. And John Anthony was just mentioning to me, he had talked to the secretary of state about the impact on the elected officials, both Board of Education and up here, um, of if we redistrict somebody out of the district. So we're going to rate them at a time to get them in.
As you may recall, there's a gentleman by the name of Donald Percy, the words secretary of state. His opinion is that if we redistrict, what's going to matter is, well, we aren't going to redistrict, but subsequent to the redistricting, what's going to matter in terms of one's ability to run for public office is going to be where that person lives after the redistricting is completed. Um, I talked to him yesterday. We had a very lengthy, um, academic discussion about our different viewpoints. I didn't change his mind. He didn't change my mind. And he suggested that it would probably be appropriate, it's a significant issue to the attorney general's office to ask the attorney general to render an opinion. So that opinion would be forthcoming, but just to kind of give you guys, when you, I mentioned the Burkhart case, which is a case out of Berkeley County, an interesting, you know, this was from nineteen ninety-four. It was a gentleman by the name of Dunham who in January nineteen ninety-four filed to run as a candidate for county commission in their Valley District. He ended up winning the primary and then Berkeley County adopted their redistricting in July of nineteen ninety-four. So after the primary, prior to the general election. So after the county magisterial districts were changed, you get to the general election in November of nineteen ninety-four. At this point, Mr. Dunham now lives in Norbourn District. Since the lines have been moved, his residence didn't change. They just basically pulled his residence into a different district. So he's elected, uh, he wins the general election. So where it creates an impact is two years later, you have the next election and you have an individual by the name of Strauss who files to run in Norbourn District. And essentially litigation ensues. Not surprising, people from different political parties ended up on opposite sides of the V. And basically Burkhart was a Democrat. He filed suit against the other candidates. I'm guessing for political reasons, but, but the gist of what came from all of that, at the circuit court level, the circuit court determined that, and to further complicate things, Mr. Dunham then moves back to the original district he had been in at the start. He moves back to the Valley District. Both the circuit court said what matters is where you live when the election takes place. When it went in front of the Supreme Court, they reversed the circuit court. And what the circuit court said, I'm sorry, what the Supreme Court said was, is what matters is where you were living when the general election took place. And they went so far as to say that the, um, elected candidate carries that designation with them through their entire six-year term. So my reading of Burkhart is that, and there's some of the options we're considering would move Allison from New Haven into Plateau. I mean, the way I read Burkhart is it doesn't matter where Allison ends up after we change the boundary districts or the district boundaries. What matters is the fact that she lived within the New Haven District in the twenty twenty election. That's where she was when she was elected. So she'll carry that designation for her entire six-year term. That's where she was when she was elected, so she'll carry that designation for her entire six-year term. Uh Mr. Cursey seemed to focus more on the fact that under the constitution um and in the West Virginia code, there's a a preference that the county be subdivided into manager ma- magisterial districts and that we have a representative from one of each of those magisterial districts. But I I don't see how you get around the language from Burkhardt. Um the legislature made some changes to the code on handed the seat qualifications subsequent to Burkhardt. There was a subsequent Supreme Court case uh in in that um, I can't remember the name of that. That particular case, but in that case, you had a candidate that started out in one district. He was qualified to run in that district. He moved to the second district. Uh it was Buckner. He moved to the second district and basically the West Virginia Supreme Court said that he was disqualified as being a candidate because the district that he moved to already had a county commissioner seated on the county commission. And in that, but in the Buckner case, the Supreme Court basically said, the gist of that is, is from the county commission's perspective, you have to live, like say, we have an opening in Plateau District like we will next year. You have to live in the district at the time you register to be a candidate and then you have to live in the district at the time you are elected in the general election. So, that's the the function, the functional meaning of of Buckner. So, my reading of those two cases is is that it matters where you lived when the general election took place and subsequent changes to magisterial districts and or um voluntary relocation by moving from one to another doesn't have any. That's that's my interpretation. I'll acknowledge Mr. Cursey probably knows a lot more about election law than I do. Um my area of expertise is obviously criminal law, but uh but like I said, we had a very, very healthy, very uh intellectual conversation about it. That ultimately, the Attorney General's office is going to weigh in. And he told me that once he gets a decision from, he's asking the AG's office to expedite their opinion. And he said, once he gets that opinion to me, or once they get the opinion again, he will forward it to me and then I can forward it to everybody else.
This can't be new since this has to come every ten years. I mean, since we redistrict, this issue has to come up with multiple elected offices all the time.
The reason I'm compelled to think I'm I'm correct on this is in Burkhardt, you have that exact situation. You have a situation where at the primary election, the candidate lived in one district and then subsequent to the redistricting, he's in another district. And the Supreme Court says, well, you were living here when you were elected, therefore.
But you think Burkhardt is going to preclude Tom from running for Plateau because I'm a Plateau person in a New Haven slot?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think you're going to be, I think Burkhardt says you are the New Haven County Commissioner for six years from the start of your term until the end of your term.
But after that, I'd have to live in New Haven to run for the slot.
You would not be able to, when your reelection comes up, you won't be able to then run for reelection because you have longer limit that district.
Now, to me, and the only problem would be is if we done this now, John's election's coming up. Now, I'm guessing he would actually have to change before the the election coming up.
Well, his district doesn't affect.
No, I know. I'm just saying to me, that would be the only place that would change would be needed because it's, we made a decision before and it's changed. So then he 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 don't file till May, no, January.
January.
And in January, so he would have to, I'm just kidding, I'm just bringing it up just for the hell, I don't want to make sense of that. John's over here, I'm not, it's not, nothing to do with you, John.
I don't think any, I don't think any of the proposed changes impact.
They don't.
No, it doesn't, but if.
I mean, what potentially.
That's what it would be because it's already changed for his next, his term.
But I mean, potentially what could happen is in twenty twenty uh twenty twenty-four, when you're up for reelection, Ms. Taylor could potentially run this.
Ain't going to happen.
Now, I mean.
Not going to happen.
If you spoke with you at that point, you'd be living in the Plateau District and I would assume.
That means I could move to New Haven then.
But you'll still be the Plateau. You'll still be the, in my opinion, you'll still be the Plateau Commissioner.
So, let me ask you this. So, if the AG weighs in, um does that have any effect? I mean, doesn't your decision?
I mean, at the end of the day, the Attorney General is is the uh is the lawyer for the state of West Virginia. Their their opinion does carry precedence, not to the extent that a Supreme Court opinion does, but it is, it is legal.
Miss like an advisory, oh.
Yeah, it's it's it's, it is legal authority. I mean, again, not not to the extent that a Supreme Court opinion would be. And certainly the Supreme Court at some point, I didn't say that Attorney Mr. Morris's opinion is wrong. But, you know, my reading on the Board of Education seats, the the requirements say you have to live in Fayette County. Basically, a five members of the Board of Education, you have to live in Fayette County and no more than two members can be from the same magisterial district. And I don't know any reason why my logic based on Burkhardt wouldn't also apply to Board of Education seats.
I got one more question. Are they going to wait thirty days to make this decision?
It was the.
AG?
Yeah.
Um I was under the impression, if I remember correctly, he says he was going to ask for a decision by next week.
Hopefully before twenty seconds. Yeah, if we if we have to put this, if you want, what you're, what you're going to probably say is, can we, can can we table this until after we get to?
I don't, well, I thought about that, but then it's not, as far as I'm concerned.
Mr. Cursey also said that his opinion is, is under the law, the impact on current uh political, current elect, the impact on current elected officials and the impact on the future local candidates is not about a consideration or determined where to draw.
And that that's kind of what I was going to go to is that, you know, we, none of.
Well, we never have.
Yeah.
Yeah, we we have.
Based on that, so I'm 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 prepared to vote today if you guys are, but if you want to table it.
I don't have a problem.
Do you?
There's a, I I brought that up simply because there was this question for the last meeting.
Okay.
When we were there last night, I said, you know, Steve, uh Stephen weighed in on the issues as well. Um but obviously, I mean, both Mr. Cursey and I can't be right. One of us is wrong.
Won't find out till court.
Well, we'll we'll find out when the AG's office places it. If the candidate in the future doesn't like the AG's opinion, then the Supreme Court will tell us.
Are you going to write a brief?
Um I sent him a summary of my position, make references to the Burkhardt case, and he's going to forward that to the AG's office.
Okay, sweet.
And then I imagine he's going to be the same and then, like I said, we'll find out uh hopefully next week if the AG's office does. And I know with the county clerk, which you have to live in your place of residence, he's for sixty days before you can file.
I think it's a day of, the day of filing, you can you can live in residence, day of filing.
County commissions, the last day of filing, that's actually in there.
Yeah.
Um I think most of them are the day of filing.
I know you.
I've been through it. I know exactly what it says.
Yeah, I've been there, done that.
Read it prior, I read it prior to it, tell us that too. I knew exactly what I was going.
Okay, let's uh let's wrap up, Steve.
I'd like to say I also support proposal six. I agree with the mayors that that has the potential to help those communities that have been taken the run of economic things in the past. Um Mary reported me last week. I agree, Thousand Oaks, Whispering Oaks should have never been in the valley district. It's been tough, my position to have to do, do what I had to do. This gives an opportunity for a true valley person to become elected to the Fayette County Board of Education like it been historical best. Um it moves me out of into New Haven, um which will protect four to five board members, okay? Um other than option two, you know, uh three, four, and five puts four board members in the same magisterial district. Um Allison, nobody in those subdivisions have, and they've been in existence. I've lived there for twenty-five years. And Thousand Oaks has been there probably another fifteen years before that. I'm the only person that's ever ran for county election out of that subdivision. Um yes, I understand we're the wealthiest neighborhood in the county and we have potential impact because of our educational.
And geographically in the plateau.
Right, in, but in the same token, the residents there have never stepped up, become involved in politics on the county level. We have one that, um Margaret Staggers lives in subdivision that's been on, you know, statewide.
It's more about cultural congruity. I mean, it's, Thousand Oaks is not like the valley.
Right, I understand.
Thousand Oaks is not like Danies or Meadow Bridge.
I understand, but you know, I used to live in, the city limits of Fayetteville, okay? Where we live is still P O Box, is still considered Fayetteville, even though it's in the county. A lot of the young people that live there graduated from Fayetteville High School. They they associate themselves, a lot of the people, with.
The plateau.
With Fayette, which is sort of been made. And I understand, I understand, okay? If I wish there was a way, yeah, yeah, I live within a mile of Marion Tanner and Gary Redd, okay? We got, we got three board members that live within a mile of each other, three districts. I understand why there's concerns, okay? But they're, they've been great county board members.
And I mean, it's clear that nobody was, you know, that the valley did not have representation because Meadow Bridge got to keep its high school and the valley did not, so.
But we didn't do that, the governor did.
Well.
The governor, Justice did.
I don't think it was just the governor. I don't think he made that decision without any input from the board. Are you going to suggest that?
We didn't have any input.
I don't believe that.
We 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 did not.
Well, I I would have found a way to give input if I were advocating for my um community, but.
Okay, Michelle, will you go ahead and start with number one and come on back to number six? Thank you.
Yes.
Sorry.
No, no, I was just saying. All right, so we'll go quickly through all six proposals for my theory. The first proposal was simple, it was simply move precinct fifty-eight, which is Haco up in Grandview, would move it to the valley district. And it also made the lease change and our difference, uh percent difference is at nine and a half percent and then still with that math. The second one made two precinct changes. It would have shifted, uh it would shift Mount Hope area to the valley district and then would, uh to compensate for that, would shift precinct four, which was Gatewood up through Canard and Kingmore. We shifted it to the plateau. Um both these maps would keep more traditional what has been the New Haven and Valley in past years in these magisterial districts. Um again, this is a slightly better percent difference at six point four percent. Number number three was our our first attempt, maybe making a little more of a drastic change, uh trying to put some of those communities together and and even out numbers. Um it would shift Plateau to be uh the Oak Hill city limits and most of Fayetteville city limits together um and then would put the New Haven district in more of the northern part of the county and then would put Valley as the southern part. Um it was an eight point seven four percent difference. So then, uh Commissioner Taylor and I kind of sat down and looked at the numbers and I thought about a little more outside of the box thinking on these. This one, proposal four, gets much closer to a percent difference, comes two point four percent. Um and it shifted more of Fayetteville into the plateau. It took me in that Thousand Oaks area as well as uh there's a small portion of Fayetteville city limits here right at nineteen, right across nineteen. Um it pulled that into the plateau and then again shifted New Haven's on the eastern side of the county and the valley would be the western side of the county. And then Commissioner Brennan and I looked more closely at some of the numbers and shifted some things around. And we got to one point seven five percent difference. This was a slight change from proposal four. It moved uh Mount Hope and the Glengene area into the valley and then shifted New Haven around a little bit and added the Beckless area and the part of of precinct fifty-six, which is up around Adventure on the Gorge, is quite the biggest thing people know about area. Moves it into the New Haven district. As I said, this got us probably our closest percent difference that we have in any of the maps. It came to one point seven five percent.
So, moved it into New Haven from what?
From the valley.
Okay. So.
Um that's that's the big difference in four and five is I switched those those precincts different too from valley to New Haven.
Okay.
Yeah, because Adventures on the Gorge really didn't have anything common with the valley.
I mean, it was just the next kind of logical progression.
Doesn't have anything common with town of Fayetteville either, yet it's in the city limits, apparently.
Rounded, yeah, they annexed, they run up, uh I think it might be sixteen, they run up, no, in inside. It's a little annexation and it's for about.
Mm-hmm.
Me.
Yeah, I see the minutes from that meeting. But.
Do you want to see six again?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Finally, we had, we worked with mayors for proposal six. Now, this, we spoke about this one a little bit earlier again. It fits most of Fayetteville city limits and Oak Hill city limits in the plateau. Um it fits Thousand Oaks and then that Adventures on the Gorge kind of area back in New Haven and then includes that Route sixty-four all the way over to Route nineteen in the valley and then disperses the population as evenly as we could without making a ton of precinct changes. That's four point one, six percent difference.
Well, I'll I'll say while I while I like this map for the valley district, I don't like it for the entire county. Um I I just, you know, I keep beating on Thousand Oaks. It's not just Thousand Oaks, but in trying to make sure the the districts most fairly represent the most amount of people and their cultural alignment and their economic um status. Right now, everything just is so Fayetteville and Oak Hill centric. And my concern was that we that we even things out better for the rest of the county. And to me, while this this does do a good job for the valley, it kind of shortsheets New Haven a little bit um by again creating that plateau nexus, in fact, a very strong one between Thousand Oaks and AOTG um to this um political base on the plateau. So, for that reason, um I think proposal five is in the best interest of the county moving forward.
Is that a motion?
Um but I'm just, that was a speaking, I was just giving my opinion and why.
I'll give my thoughts, okay? Well, I was between four and five. I like to play four and five. Okay, so. Okay, so, go forward and five up.
Just distinguish the differences again for us between four and five, please.
So the, the major shifts, there's really only one shift in these two maps. The only. The only real differences are in proposal four. We have the Glengene area and the Summit Beckwith, which is, you know, for, is this right through here? That's in New Haven on proposal four. And then the Beckwith area and that Adventure on the Gorge area are in the Valley District on this map. And then in proposal five, we just split blocked those. So the Glengene area was pulled into the Valley. And then that, uh, Beckwith area and, uh, Vintage on the Gorge was brought into New Haven District. There's, that's the only two differences in those two maps.
The percentage of on four is.
Two point four four percent.
And then one seven five, one.
So basically, it's Glengene on the first, on five, it's Glengene and the Valley District, Mount Hope in the Valley District. And then the AOTG area is in New Haven.
Correct.
And then on the other one, it's, AOTG is in the Valley District and the Mount Hope and.
Yeah.
Glengene areas are in.
Glengene, Mount, the, Mount Hope specifically is in the Valley in both maps, which is a change from now, from current, 'cause now it's, right now it's in the Plateau. Um, but, uh, within the Glengene area is the one that switches. And, and the vast majority of that is, is really the, uh, Summit Beckwith of that particular precinct. It looks large on the map, but it doesn't have a lot of people in it.
I'm still leaning toward five.
Well, I can go with the one, that's the two, and I, but, uh, Don, you wanna give your input?
I like, I like number six, but, um, I guess I'm, I, I'm gonna lean toward five. First, because of the area it's representing, it's got everything together. It's important to. Get common ground with common districts. So I'm gonna say five.
I don't think there's any reason, though, I, I was thinking the whole time, and I, I could see Commissioner Luis is kind of. Thinking about the same thing when you guys were presenting. I was thinking, there's no reason with that group that you formed that we couldn't elect or appoint a commissioner to your group.
I know, are you?
Are, are you on it, on the, I remember us doing that, but. Um, but anyway, just to make sure that, that whatever that group, that Route sixty group is coming up with, that, that, all those ideas are represented at this level. And brought here.
Actually, Mayor Pridemore has been doing quite a bit and very vocal. You know, I missed a meeting last night because we had the, uh, comp plan meeting. But, uh, on the minutes that I read, read, a lot of things accomplished.
Okay, well, with that, I move that we vote for, um, proposal five.
I'll wait a second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to accept proposal five as our new magisterial districts.
Wait, do we need to vote on the precinct, we need to vote on the precincts first? Sorry, let me withdraw, let me withdraw that temporarily. Can you present the precincts as they are in proposal five, please?
Yeah. And again, we, I mentioned last time, and I feel like it's worth repeating, these precincts ones, we only really changed. The ones that had to be changed because of where the Senate and the House drew their lines. We had a lot of changes, especially in the Fayetteville, but Oak Hill area in particular, but in that, that central area. I don't really know what you guys need to know, actually, I think that's the first one, Sarah. What? Yep. Sorry. That's a difficult one. Yeah. Yeah, that's right.
I like that, I can see it.
Um. Yeah. Hey, look at the, it says, okay. Yeah, I mean, so. Not exactly sure what you guys would like.
Well, so this is the, this is the precinct proposal that matches.
Would match proposal five, yes.
Proposal five.
And I said, most of these.
I talked to Mr. Cursey about this, and he basically said that the precincts, that the redraw precinct boundaries do not have to necessarily coincide with the redraw magisterial district boundaries. But he said it based things more, much more simple, if the precinct boundaries do coincide with the magisterial district.
Okay, so, in this case, I move that we, um, approve Fayette precinct proposal two.
A second. Okay, I have a motion, a second to accept the new precinct changes, all those in favor?
Aye. And then I'll renew my motion to accept proposal five for the magisterial district changes.
A second. Okay, we have a motion, a second to accept proposal five for magisterial districts for the next ten years, all those in favor?
Aye. I want to once again commend the county clerk for her hard work on all of this. If you, if you hadn't put your nose to the grindstone, we would have ended up with one option or two, I mean, you know.
Here, felt like I needed, in our, when I saw those original, uh, house, and then stuff started coming, I figured, I better, uh. Learn this stuff pretty quick, 'cause it's gonna take us long, it's gonna be my, our office, our work is now just starting, so.
Okay, now, when will you start sending out your notifications?
Well, waiting on the secretary state's office, a little bit on that. We're, I'm already in the works, I'm trying to figure out the most cost-effective ways and something to register voter, 'cause it's looking, it's going to be like six or seven thousand dollars across one for the postage. Um, so, uh, but that will start as soon as, as soon as I find what's the best price and get you something in our next meeting to approve the cost. And, um, then we will ship that out, so hopefully that can go out. And then that would be ready to go that first week of December. Um, and then we, as soon as they will let us start doing what we need to do in our program for this, to sit to do voter registration changes, then those, those things will start moving out. So hopefully by the first of the year, we'll have a majority of people notify.
Okay.
And there, I will, uh, change the line with on my, on the county clerk's end of the website. With this information that shows that these are the ones that you guys approved, and who have questions, they can call. And I already have, uh, shape files for the magisterial districts from the WU people that I can, uh, get to Jamie. And he might be able to, and layer to, uh, GIS, the art map.
Anthony, do you need some water?
What?
You want a bottle of water?
She thought she needed a bottle.
You want a bottle of water?
Sure.
I was about to dump it into my cup, and I was looking to see if everybody had water, and then I noticed you didn't have any.
The other question? I appreciate you being able to listen and work, and, and I, I kind of want to reiterate the statement that, um, we do this for the citizens of Fayette County. And some of the concerns that have been brought up in different arenas about politicians, where we live is secondary or if, and not, or kind of consideration at all, when these things should be.
I don't know anything about anything.
So, thank you, appreciate it.
Well, thank you for the hard help, both of you. And, and the colors were better than your crayons, which you.
I use them too, so. All right, so.
Our two gentlemen with, uh, Worth Creek Park, the development plan.
They probably left.
They both had prior meetings.
Do we need to postpone that?
Yeah, so we need to.
Can we add it to the special meeting on the twenty-second? I know we like to keep it, keep it small, but.
I think, can they give the update everything, 'cause you said it'd be a zone meeting?
Yeah, they should be able to, should they, what do you think?
I think they should, but, you know, they both had prior.
I don't mind it not being, I don't mind it being in person, I'll call it person, let's just have a meeting in person and put them on there. It's okay, we're just getting.
At the beginning, so we can.
It's a holiday.
We'll have Michael Taylor, this is his issue anyway.
So can we get Mr. Taylor?
Well, if I can check anything, because it's all day.
Can we throw the file? He can take care of those of them, and. Oh, okay.
I mean, if you're.
Yes, I agree, the organization is.
Does that kind of do, loop everything in like we were talking about? Meeting the same as we can. That way it all ties in as best we can. Dana, you did well. You did well, Dana.
Is this, is this great time, or are we, are we still in the air?
We're still in the air, I'm, I'm checking to see if Michael Taylor can join that meeting.
On the twenty-second.
And that would be great, that way we can. And then we can even have an executive session after we do that sometimes.
While you're texting, Health Department Building is our next thing.
Oh, yeah, I've got my little map right there, yeah.
Awesome, so I'll let you know when I hear back from you. So, Health Department Building. Well, I mean, I'm still in this, Anthony, has, has the board, the report board discussed the Health Department Building and?
We've not had any conversations about location for the DRC.
Okay. I believe the DRC would be. Better off and more effective a program if it were closer to the courthouse.
Oh, I, I agree.
I'd like to see it in that building, but we do still have a problem of finding space for the additional court employees that are coming in for these new programs that Supreme Court keeps.
You talking about?
I'm talking about, yeah, they're attached to the probation office, but yeah, their Supreme Court program, so. I talked to Judge Ewing the other day, um, during teen court, and he told me they've got, right now, we have the, the family treatment court coordinator who's working in a, in a space that's not really an office, they're over in his chambers. We, we have a peer recovery person who's coming in, who's gonna need a full-time office. And then there's potentially a third office that they're gonna need within the next year.
How many offices does Judge Ewing have? What, what he have in the next year?
He needs three offices, three additional offices.
Just, uh, probation?
No, to add, to expand probation, they're.
He just needs three total, but did he tell you what?
Yeah, plus the probation time.
Like blocking off that little portion of the law.
Of the law library.
Yeah, and what, so I can look at it, and I think it's work, it's very doable, and it's, I, I mean.
Can they make offices there, 'cause they'll need confidentiality when.
Oh, yeah, you can make, there's already a couple of rooms there, that will work.
The reason I ask is 'cause I, I, I didn't do walk-through like y'all did.
I didn't walk through it, yeah.
Oh, you didn't, John?
He did.
I did.
I did, I just counted what I thought was offices. And, uh, it described.
There's a whole lot more space.
Well, fifteen offices is what I counted, and 'cause I excluded what I thought was closets, and there's the bathrooms and stuff like that. That's why I was asking how many offices he needed, how many offices do they need at DRC? Will people work it out there?
I really still don't understand, and, and I mean, Judge Ewing did voices preference, or, you know, he thought that, you know, all DRC should be DRC and that sort of thing, but, um. And I understand where he's coming from there, but DRC's mission and probation's mission are very similar. They need similar facilities, they need private offices to meet with the clients, they need drug testing ability, they need reception, that sort of thing, so. And I'm not suggesting that, um, one would do the other's job, but we have had issues in the past where we haven't had a male or a female screener on site and. Yeah, and so, I think if, if we had a design on that Health Department Building, where there was a reception area. Have you ever walked in a doctor's office in the reception area and you go to Doctor X here and Doctor Y here, you know? So you check in, whether it's probation or day report, you check in there, if you're reporting day report, they might even have another entrance where they can all just go in or whatever, but.
There's three entrances here.
But if there's a, but if they're going in for a screen, you know, the facilities for them to screen would, could be used for screens, no matter who is supervising it.
Well, what I was gonna suggest is, if there's any way, Anthony, take this to DRC, and it's, I mean, looking at it. If you can take the plans and walk through that and see what area you could utilize and squeeze it down, so then we do have other office spaces just in case, I mean, I, I mean, I.
I really think that, I mean, rather than, I, I know Judge Ewing is willing to sacrifice his library, and I, and I appreciate that, but at the same time, I really think we could easily accommodate that.
That's what I'm saying.
Right here, and, and, and build in some redundancy, you know, we could have an MOU with probation, with Chief Judge's permission and that.
Everything's scheduled, if you wanna share, so, there's two sets of restrooms, there's two sets.
Yeah, I think so too, so.
Have you even looked at the building?
I agree, well, I figure what we could do is maybe we could get community corrections to be able to have a meeting. You have your meeting here, set up a tour where you guys can walk through that building, and, um. And also, since key players, you, Chief Judge, are on the same thing, could discuss whether, and he could tour that too, and just discuss whether there's a possibility. Once he gets to look at it, you know, he might reconsider where he wants the office. I don't, I'm not gonna push back, I mean, if he wants to have him in his space, that's fine, but I really feel like he's, you know, given all the security issues on that floor and everything, it's gonna be better to have it over here.
So basically, you want, I think we need to get the employees from DRC to come over here, take a look.
Yeah, the employees, I think your board needs to look at it, I think, especially since Fridley's on it, and security's an issue, like he can speak to whether, you know, like access to Judge Ewing's floor is different than access to other parts of the courthouse.
So basically, you guys wanna get an idea of what portion of this DRC needs and what portion we could set aside for possibly probation.
Yeah, see, we could put twenty, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six.
Yeah, I think this, I don't think this, uh.
Well, that's, that's sort of pamphlets and stuff.
Yeah.
So that could be probation, and all the rest could be DRC.
Yeah, I think we still have.
Did you look at it? Because this, you'd have to build walls, because these are the walls you just pushed back.
Yeah.
But I think it would work.
But the point is, is there's a ton of space over there, and I think if the judge, I think the judge should get to look over there with you and the day report staff. And kind of take a look and see, see what it might need, see if there's enough space, see if there's extra space where probation might fit. Just, I mean, just think about it and game it out a little bit, 'cause all y'all are the key players in the whole thing. Maybe even invite the chief of probation to go over with you. He's on the board too, and he.
Yes.
Okay, so, I mean, you've got everybody, you need to discuss the whole thing, I mean.
Anthony, I wanna throw this in, I didn't know this.
What?
About all the models can be taken down and moved.
There's, it's like one of those lodges in the office buildings, so.
It can be reconfigured.
Except for the bathroom.
So it's kind of like Legos.
Yeah.
So you can just basically move walls around?
That's what, I, I mean, I didn't know that, yeah.
That's what they are.
So that way you can make, move this, make the space the way you want it.
And I'll just tell you that Jim told me yesterday that there is discussion, they're gonna raise the rent.
Again.
At that building, and that.
They, I don't think they want them out there, I think.
They don't.
I think they're giving them incentive to move.
We don't, we don't want them out there either, so, um. But it's great that all the, all. But it's great that all the, all the stakeholders in the, in the whole, you know, in the whole day report versus probation process are on that board. If you guys can have a meeting and go toward it and discuss, I mean, just discuss the whole thing. Does it, I mean, I know it's not exactly community corrections, probation isn't community corrections business, but it.
Split it up. The way that is, there's three entrances when I say entrances and exits. And if Ruth is right, which I'm not saying you're wrong with because I, I have been entered to look at it. If all them walls can be taken down and the bathrooms, you can split it up very easily.
And they could share the testing bathrooms and then have employee bathrooms. So.
It's, I was shocked. I have no idea.
And we could put, and if we had to, we could put more permanent like walls up between the two departments, you know? So.
Yeah.
And then how many doors?
Three.
Yeah.
I mean, I see what Tom said. You could basically take your place in the building, right side, left side.
Do you want mine that haven't been written on?
Right side and the left side and then the people that come in on the center if you want to use a sit. I don't know. Yeah, three entrances.
Well, actually, Tom made a copy before we wrote.
Yeah, I wrote all the, the, yeah.
So, yeah, because that's, but, I mean, we, we are open as far as configuration, given offices to probation. I mean, can I, can I say that fairly? And, and helping configure the space so it will accommodate the separation of missions and that sort of thing. The, the main question now is, I, I think if you get everybody over there to take a look at the space and, and look at these maps and just get an opinion on it. I mean, even if you want to talk to Judge one-on-one before you all meet, we can get you a tour of it.
Thank you. Copy. Just taking a tour. Where did you get this? I'll just say I got it from Ruth. That's almost it. Can you give me a copy of this?
You can have my copy.
Don't you have a packet? It should be in it.
I didn't download it. It's.
Oh.
You can have that. I have the original.
But I mean, you can split this up.
You have a lot of boxes.
Yeah, and you guys can, you know, but I, I think you guys need to look at it.
Dimensions of these offices are.
Well, it doesn't matter. You split them up. What Ruth says, you can take all the walls down.
Anthony wants to move over there.
I didn't say that.
She's got a key, don't you?
Sunny has.
Yeah, we have a key. So we can set it up with Sunny to.
I'm happy with the building I'm in now.
Are you?
Yeah.
I wouldn't be happy with that bathroom placement. I mean, because it's right by her office. It gets right to me.
That's a great conversation.
It does. It does. Most of the, most of the men in that office go to magistrate court to go to the bathroom because or they did.
I haven't noticed any problems. We got a new sink.
Oh, wow. That's fancy. Okay, so no budget revision. So on the old Health Department Building, where are you guys meeting again, Anthony?
Um, I don't know. I mean, we're, we're in the process of trying to get the setup. I was wanting to get that done before the next meeting.
Yeah.
So it's just going to be a function of how quickly we can get the job interviews scheduled.
I think it would be cool, like if, even if you could before then, get the judge and the sheriff, a couple of people together and go over there and tour it.
Well, I'd like to.
Just to get to thinking on it.
How do we get to, how do we get access to it?
Sunny.
Sunny has key.
Yes, she does. I don't mind if Sunny gives him a key. He can just set it up. He's going to need a key anyway. I mean, probably, you know, because he's on, he's the head of the Community Corrections Board.
I really wonder if we could just re, we should rekey it.
We should rekey it.
I won't rekey the doors until after.
Until we make the final.
And who's, if he.
Well, but you know, the Health Department's not going in there and you don't really know who else has keys to the building.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't rekey it until you make your decision finalized and everything fixed inside of it.
Before we start the construction, then key it. Because, you know.
I see where Ruth is coming from is unknown number of people have access to that building.
Yeah.
And the director have access to the building before.
Are you talking about rekeying it now?
Yes, just the outside entrances.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, let's do that.
Understood that.
Let's do that, but whether it's done or not, just make sure, yeah, make sure Anthony can get in there. But, I mean, if the judge sees a way to put probation over there, we're open to it. I mean, they can share, I mean, some of the, you know, those new probation officers. It's the same function. It's just different administrative changes.
Well, this one, you need, you need to set a space. What, the way this works and what Ruth's talking about, it is.
Well, I'll reach out to, I'll reach out to Judge and show you.
If it's a problem.
And have access to, like the GPS. DRC does GPS for probation. I mean, they can access that. They can walk in and, you know.
But you're not talking about putting all of probation.
No, no. I was just talking about the, well, I would say, you know, the special programs officers, drug court, family treatment court, you know, the peer review or the peer counselor that he was talking about. And I, I don't remember what the other ones was, but yeah. Those ones, I, and that would open up one office in probation.
Yeah, Jennifer.
Yeah, but I mean, it would make sense to have hers over, in my mind, but, you know, that's up to them. It's not mine. I don't have a dog in that fight.
So you will postpone that to a future agenda or what?
I think, what do you mean to the building?
That's just a discussion.
I'd like to pick all of this buildings. I want the Altmark.
No, me too. Me too. It's got a bunch of cool stuff still in there, like newspapers open to the sixties. So I don't think we need to postpone it. We already know what we want to do with that building. So I move that we start taking action to move the day report center over to the Health Department Building. Probably just need to get, how do we start with like getting that configured?
Well, I, I mean, I don't know, but I think they, I think, I think they need to figure out what they, where they want it before we move it over there.
Well, you just motion and then they can start working on it and figure out who's on there.
Yeah, I mean, I think we can, we can allocate that building for that purpose as soon as we have a plan in place and.
That way it's not like.
Right, and then they can bring the plan to configure it to us so we can prove the plan separately.
All right, just do it.
Want to do it? All right, so I, I move that we come up with a plan to move the day report center into the old Health Department Building here by the courthouse with the provision that we may allocate some space to probation depending on the court's needs.
A second. Okay, we have a motion in a second. All in favor?
I have some combined divots over there, makes this.
Okay.
Carol, I am.
One. This guy's name's John Brown. I wonder if he's got any little indies.
I'll get plenty of that name.
Or Tom, you can do all these and, or you can do all these in one motion if you want to.
So all of these, like I always check to see if it's the same owners dividing or combining their own property. And that is the case in all of these. So therefore I move that we approve these combined divide and segregate plans as presented to us.
A second. Okay, we have a motion in second to do the combine, divide, segregate. All those in favor?
So the calendar, is that where we are?
Would you guys like to do the budget reviews in February again, like we did this last year? And that gave us more time to work on the actual budget in March?
Is that what we, that's what it said, how it set up, right?
No.
Well, we set it up that way last year. You get it that way last year.
I thought that was how she had it set up this year, Amy.
It is how she did. Yeah, it's for legalization and review. You have to meet those days, but then we have the election officials here. Come in and give their presentations in February so that all your meetings in March are just your work.
Yeah, you put it in February.
So you, you'll just, they'll just come in and meet on those thirty-first, fourth, tenth, and sixteenth.
Well, at least there's my, my birthday issue. So we're just, we're just doing the first half then you're looking at, okay.
There's a session about I thought it made it onto that one that I pointed out. Uh, they're talking about Juneteenth. Seventeenth, uh, the state and the County Commission, County Commissioners Association. There was some discussion about when that would be observed and general consensus is that it will be observed on the seventeenth since we already have the twentieth.
Seventeenth of what?
June.
I would observe it on West Virginia. Rather than another holiday.
What are we doing in June this year? We get two days.
Yeah, I mean, Juneteenth is a state holiday now, so.
My family is always followed the state holiday. And the Supreme Court has already set it as. Yeah, but usually if it falls on a Saturday, you observe it on Friday. It falls on Sunday, observe it on Monday. It falls on Sunday, but we already have Monday off. So Supreme Court is an hour.
Didn't that mean when like you guys give like the extra day Thanksgiving is Washington's birthday? So Juneteenth observed is going to be on the seventeen.
So it turns out I don't have to work on my birthday. I think that's great. If you didn't have another reason to do that.
There is.
See, that's all the reason.
I'm fine with the calendar.
Yeah, I'm fine with the calendar too. Okay, just one second. I'm counting.
There will be a couple of election-related days you guys are going to have to think about.
Oh, yeah.
Well, I don't mind the two-sided. Two-sided stuff.
We've got election-related days too.
Yeah, there's some election stuff. Has it been included on this?
Say again?
The election.
No, because we haven't coordinated those yet. So.
Okay, this coordinator.
Um, I have a couple of them, yeah.
What, which ones do you have?
Well, we'll have to have canvas on May sixteenth.
May what?
May the sixteenth will be canvas for the primary.
Canvas.
Um, we have to.
So we can move that meeting from the eighteenth to the sixteenth.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Um, there are some, there, there are some other things that we were able, we can put on current, on meetings that you guys have on here. So this doesn't really count. The only other one that we needed, might need to think about in April, we have to test the machines. We have to go over to the memorial building and, and we all have to use our own keys to open the room and all that good fun jazz.
When do early elections start?
It starts the twenty-seventh of April. So we have to test the machines no later than the twenty-second of April.
We have to, we have to meet on the nineteenth. That's set in state code.
Right. So we didn't know, Sarah and I didn't know if you guys wanted to also go over there and do that on the nineteenth or if you wanted to set another day.
I usually do the same, like we start in the memorial building.
It's fine. I didn't, I was going to give you, give options.
Yeah, we're going to do that on the nineteenth.
And, and Amy, I looked at that and even though the code does not read like that to me, it, that, it clearly does not say it. There's a note on there that says that as long as we have the election day materials loaded on the, the loaded in our stuff, on our sticks, we can do this, the test on both early voting and election day voting. Um, but that is not what the code says, but that's okay. That's what the Secretary of State has decided is okay.
Do you want to do both tests on the nineteenth? If you're ready?
Yeah. I'm paying the price.
So gee, I mean.
Because you're supposed to do, you're supposed to test the early election stuff and then test because, and then test the five days, at least, or no later than five days before. And then you're supposed to test the election day stuff no later than five days before. So, but the, well, that's what they're saying. I said, I, I think the one for the election day says shall be tested five days before. It doesn't say no later.
It'll be five business days.
Yeah.
So you're saying the code says you have to do it exactly five days before.
Or less.
Or less. They're less than five days before.
So, but anyway, I, we.
And then your, the code actually says you have to do it five days.
That's what, that's what I had read, but.
Well, it's five business days.
Yeah. Well, but the difference in, there's no, no earlier or later than that. Just says shall be tested five days before the general election.
Early voting closes on Saturday the seventh.
Yeah. Yeah. And so Amy said the meeting on May eighteenth will be on the sixteenth because that's when the canvas is going to be.
Yeah, that's in May. Right. So early elections are only going to be eleven days?
Maybe I told you the wrong day. What day does early, does early voting start?
It's ten days.
Yeah.
Yes. Twenty-seven. It usually starts on Wednesday and ends on Sunday.
Okay, nevermind. I mean, on a deck Sunday.
All right, so calendar as is. The only change is May eighteenth is moved to May sixteenth for the primary canvas.
Okay, let's take a look at, at May and June. One, two, the third week should be June the first. And then one, two, three, June the twenty-second. Instead of June the eighth and June the twenty-ninth.
I'm wondering if I set it up that way so we wouldn't have a meeting right after a holiday.
Makes sense.
I don't know.
Because we meet, we have a holiday on
Yeah.
May thirtieth and then come back and have them one day.
I agree with that.
A lot of people are gone.
Yeah, and then trying to avoid it being right around, then we would have the same thing happen again after a four-day weekend. We would meet on the twenty-second. So that's why I split it up that way.
Okay.
That makes sense.
Just wanted to know.
Okay, so the only changes are move May eighteenth to May sixteenth and then add the Juneteenth observed on, uh, June seventeenth.
Correct.
June seventeenth is what now?
That's that Juneteenth holiday. It's a state holiday now. It's, it's, Juneteenth is actually the nineteenth, but because
Of May?
Of June. This is Juneteenth. He didn't need, he didn't need today.
I seen John marking up here on the eighteenth of May. They mentioned the sixteenth, but it's, it's a seventeenth and I, and I was confused.
Yes, now we're down here. So this is a holiday.
I see Mark and it's a period.
Yeah, so that meeting is moved to here and then down here, that's a holiday. Yeah. He's just trying to mess with you. So I move that we approve the calendar through June of twenty-twenty-two as amended, as discussed.
A second. Don't we have to do the holidays first and then?
Do we?
Well, is that the official state holiday?
Don't we just follow the state?
Like the December meeting? Yeah. That's a memo we send out to the employees. So.
Okay, so we need to approve the holidays and then the calendar. We can just do it both in one shot.
Okay.
Or you can do the calendar today. We'll do the holidays later.
We can do them all. Let's get them knocked out now. I'm sending it out when you're ready. Okay, so I'll send that vote. I move that we approve the holidays to coincide with state holidays.
A second. Okay, we have a motion in second to approve the holidays and the Fayette County Commission calendar through June. All those in favor? Okay, now, we had a, we have another amendment on the or a change on the yeah. On the minutes. The money that was going to.
All that grant is for the regional response truck.
Yeah.
The DHS.
The sixty-four thousand dollars, sixty-eight thousand dollars.
That was going to a regional response truck and the Homeland Security Grant Program Award. And the amount of sixty-five thousand dollars even was not going to reimburse. In the amount of sixty-five thousand dollars even, was not going to reimburse salaries as we thought it was going to the regional response truck upgrades. And I move that we accept it for those purposes rather than the salary purposes.
A second. Motion, a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
That was the last thing I remember us talking about.
Now, upcoming meetings. You want to talk about upcoming meetings?
Upcoming agendas.
Agendas.
I think that's.
I don't think she put it on here.
It's down at the bottom, it's the future.
Oh, yeah, right here it is, way down here.
December fifteenth, do we have a draft agenda for that?
Probably, but Amy just had the lead, so.
Well, I was going to ask about.
I'm not touching anything on this computer.
I was going to ask about shooting, but.
Oh, yeah, yeah, wasn't that on here?
Okay, okay, okay.
No, but somebody needs to write that narrative I emailed all you guys about. Go to that center of finance.
Oh, okay, well, I think, okay, all right.
You were supposed to go talk to Bob or Michelle.
Yeah, yeah, I, I'll take, I'll try to take care of that, stay before, by two-thirty. You're going to write the list, too?
Did Michael Taylor answer you, Allison?
No, he probably did. Yes, he can.
He can?
Yeah.
So the twenty-second will be, what?
Ten AM, and it's going to be URA update on Wolf Creek Park. And what was the other thing you said we were going to do? Okay, um, the Gabe's pitch for the, for the grant.
Yeah, I think we'll have to, although we got to mention it on there.
Okay, so, um, we'll just say, um, legal update on, on the farm transfer. Yep.
That way we do everything and get it done.
We can at least discuss it, know what we're going to do, and if we have to, you know, know what his current advice is.
Anthony, I got something else I want to talk about, and you're the one and one up here. I, I've called, uh, Gully Bridge, said that they've been told that, uh, somebody wanted to do a rental, pack rentals down there, uh, for people in the Canal River and floating down the, uh, Valley River from Swiss, not, not above Swiss, from Swiss to Gully Bridge. And they said that they can't do it, got to have a license to do it, well, I thought the license only pertained to the Upper and Lower Valley and Upper and Lower New, but they're saying that, that pertains to them sections, too, so I called the DNR, I called A, and everybody gave me to Lieutenant Colonel David Trader, I believe his name's David Trader. I called him a couple times, I left a message, but he's not returned my call.
It's, isn't it set up in the code?
Well, well, I mean, I'm, I'm, so can they or can they not?
I don't know, but I, I thought the license requirements for setting one in the West Virginia code, as far as.
Sections.
What sections of river you need to have a license for.
Well, see, I thought it was only up to lower New.
Well, let me, let me take a look at the code and see what I can find.
Okay, because I, I even put some, uh, in this, uh, map social, I put some put-ins and take-outs on both Canal River and from Swiss to Gully Bridge, and I talked to him about it, and he said, we can't.
How about from Gully Bridge to Smithers, that would be exciting, uh, yeah.
Just a little bit. We were, oh, yeah, the falls.
Yeah.
Yeah. But.
But in all seriousness, I, I thought, I thought the West Virginia code said that we need to have.
Permit to, to even rent, attach the people.
Well, I, I think what they're probably, what they're concerned about is whether or not the activity. Follow-up. And whether or not it will follow up with the. That operate on the hill. Here's, I mean, you don't need, permit to operate outside of the whitewater.
Believe me, you have to, fifteen dollars, I think you can get fishing permits to take people, can't you?
I, I, I understand, but, but let me, let me see what I can find out.
Okay.
I mean, but it sounds to me like they're doing quite a lot.
I don't know, I need to.
Yeah, but I, I didn't think so, but I, I had it.
Let me see, let me see what the code says.
Okay, and then we'll go from there. And then.
But let me just, let me take a look at the code.
Okay, I, I mean, I, I thought he would call me back, but I've, it's been two weeks, and I don't really, permanent vacation, or, or.
Maybe you need to call him again.
Maybe he just don't want to call me. I mean, I left a message a couple times, and the last time I called yesterday, the day before, it didn't even transfer me to a person or a answer.
Okay, um, John suggested, and I agree, that we go ahead and put the nine-one-one position description on the twenty-second as well, so we can get that, close that call with you.
Okay, yeah.
All right, so to summarize, we've got Gabe's presentation, the URA presentation on the development plan, and executive session on, um, to confer with Michael Taylor about the farm, and then the, um, what I just said.
I don't know.
Nine-one-one description.
Okay, where is, uh, where's our ten-page presentation from Gabe, so that we can go over that?
Probably email it to.
Yeah, he probably won't have it for a couple of days, I'm sure.
No, he actually already emailed it to you.
Woo, woo.
Oh, okay.
He's on it. I got one more thing I want to ask the commission. The, uh, the lively that, that was not, uh, reappointed to the New Haven. Rumor, because, because he said he wasn't, didn't live in the district. You remember that, Alan?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, now he does live in the district.
He lives in it now?
Well, he, he always.
That we redrew it?
No, no, he always lived in it, and that's why, and that's what I talked to the, the West Virginia American Water Man. I've done some research, and I found out that West Virginia American Water has an agreement with New Haven. New Haven is the people in the district, but West Virginia American Water has a contract that they give them the water, use the water, it's a development, it's, it's a part of the development agreement.
And the PSC originally said, no, he does not. Then they filed, um, a letter or a memorandum from nineteen ninety-eight.
I don't even think it's a memorandum, John.
It is. Well, like, they said that that is part of the district, so the public service commission guy called Amy, it's not.
Yeah.
But they have it in writing that it is.
Well, and after I learned the agreement, and that's what you were talking about, you just found that a couple of days, I mean, I, I worked that a couple of weeks ago.
So, so it means that we should go ahead and appoint Mr. Lively to the.
But we'd have to do it on a regular vote in a regular meeting.
Well, so we could put that on the next regular meeting, but I was going to ask you to add to the, um, twenty-second, too, because I was editing the minutes this morning, and you know where we're going to do a letter to Joe about the spending and stuff.
Did you guys approve that?
Yeah.
That's a good idea.
On that, at that twenty-second meeting.
We just might as well figure out, bring him a lunch break, some lunch.
You can, you can send me the draft if you want, and I'll, I'll.
I was actually looking up the code that I had put it this morning, and I asked Anthony, he didn't know either.
And plus, we need to move him over here to be watched better.
I do feel like we need to put our coordinator out of the nine-one-one center, but.
So we're going to put that twenty-second also?
The latter's in there.
Not, but Lively. Fifteen, okay.
Okay. So on the record, so when we're done.
Do you have any else? Mr. Remenman, Mr. Remenman?
No, Mr. Losses.
All right, move to adjourn.
That, that's what that was. Mr. Losses? I did it, that will take what?